How long has it been passed to the municipal regular council meeting on Tuesdays, November 5th? To be put in place in 2023? Do you think these rights have been applied?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Can I give approval of the motion? I do need to make some amendments to it. Under Citizens Business Miracle, number two, city utility increases. Under Mayor Council Member Reports, we need to add a number four, joint power reports. Number five, Pawd Pacifics. Number six, Newcastle Islands. And understanding committee reports, the police committee. That's all I have to add. A mayor ending motion, we approve the new intervention.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of the public say aye. Approval of the minutes of meeting and executive session on Monday, August 21st, 2023.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of the public say aye. Nomination for recognition, I nominate Natasha Thompson and Martha Vickford for Venice Supreme.
I have one too, on that matter. Veterans talking to veterans. Dan and Vicki Heileber started a veterans group to support veterans. Wyoming has one of the highest suicide rates amongst veterans. And 10% of our population are veterans in Wyoming.
And that's every posting, right?
I don't recall which day, but I think they have it in the basement of their Catholic church.
I think it's every posting is why they have it.
I thought it was a really great thing for them to do. I think they deserve to be recognized.
Thank you. Any other recognitions? So to the recognition, we have Barbie Carey. I don't see her here. But her recognition is her dedication to keeping Newcastle beautiful and to thank her for all the care of the local flower growers. And then our other recognition is for Penn Councilman. Hers is for a thank you for taking care of the flowers located at the Newcastle Visitor Center. So we'll get these mailed out to them. Business and writing, we have received none. Citizens Business Miracle, number one, Tom Hawley.
I came to the council meeting July 17th this year to complain about the police department for threats of illegal tickets, illegal arrest. Thompson, write an email. That we can investigate, have a police committee report, or me. I sent down July 23rd. I have not received anything back since then. Why not? Did the meeting happen?
I think it did not happen. And the result of our choosing on the duty. So without having handled the rule, we weren't able to have that meeting. But in regards to your threats and illegal arrests, I'm not exactly sure what they were directed to or in regards to.
Ask him. He's the one that did it. Threatened me three times with arrest, but he had no idea what I would be arrested for. You want to say anything?
Why arrest you?
On June 8th. You threatened to arrest me three times, and I asked you for what? I don't know.
But you're a hypothetical.
No. You said, if it was my crime scene, I would have arrested you. That is not a hypothetical.
It is indeed a hypothetical.
The word if being a defective word there, if it was his crime scene.
There's no reason to say it three times in their tongue.
I wasn't there, I'm not going to go over that.
Did you watch the video?
No, I haven't seen a video of any of it.
This is ridiculous.
What do you want out of this? Please tell us, tell us.
I want you to hold the council accountable.
Okay, and what would that be? How would we, what's the conclusion?
In doing.
Reprimand them, fine them, what?
In doing. If they are doing stuff illegal, they should be fired.
Okay.
Pretty soon.
So what should they do that was illegal?
Did you just hear me? Threaten illegal tickets. Threaten illegal arrests.
Okay. I know of the video. And to be honest, when I discussed it with a member of the post certification, you were interfering with the officer.
No, I wasn't. Because who did you talk to?
I talked with post, post certification, Chris Walsh.
Because explaining the Fifth Amendment is not interference.
At that.
If you believe that, you shouldn't be talking.
At that correct, you were interfering with the officers and the deputies doing what they.
No, I was not.
That sounds like an impasse, and that'd be something for a court to decide, not for this guy.
Oh, where am I being told?
Well, I wouldn't. There's no meat here. There's no meat here, and the man just told you, he used the word if, you know. John, we can't reach out and, do you know how hard it is to find a policeman, especially one of that quality?
That quality?
That quality, to be in this community? Believe me, we are having a hell of a time. And I'm on that police committee. We've got one person right now that may want a job here, we don't know, she's from Montana. But John, we can't go around slapping them for every time they open their mouth and think maybe you were interfering. And really, it's just, there's no meat. You know, if you've got an officer selling drugs to kids, I'm going to listen. But this has got to stop. We're not trying to take you off, we don't go out in the wimperly to pick on our citizens, and neither do they. But I'll stand beside that officer all day wrong.
You'll be wrong most of the time.
No.
Anything else you want to put into that policy?
I'm pretty sure if I remember it correctly, that in the city handbook, it says you cannot be direct supervisor of a family member. Now, I didn't ask Ty or Greg on that, because they went through the handbook a lot more than I have lately. So if that is the case, how is the girlfriend on the police force, and he's direct supervisor?
He's not a direct supervisor.
He is right now.
No, he's not. It has been, and I have had an email that I need to come to the police committee for myself. And I can look that email up right now and show you.
Because where's the chief at?
The chief is on medical leave.
Why wasn't the citizen's report, or where was it?
Well, it's medical, it's a HIPAA. And.
You don't have to say why.
It's a personal issue.
So citizens don't matter about personnel issues? Don't they need to know what's going on, see?
Everybody that has heart to me has identified that one time this year, he was on vacation and now he's out.
Not along the medical leave. A pro per.
So. Yeah, until it's worked in his top approval, so I can't answer that. Plus, I'm not a physician.
What is the hiring procedure for officers?
They have to be 21, is that correct?
Yes.
They have to be 21. They do an extensive background check through the NCIC, which is FBI/DCI-based computer system. A credit check. They have to have a high school diploma. And they have to attend at the academy.
So what is the process of interviewing them for a job?
They would have to fill out, they would have to fill out application. And it would have to be turned into the police department. And right now Sheridan, Captain Ringley, is doing all our background investigations. Or in the title.
And he's doing the interviews.
The police department staff. And then it is brought to us as a council. And pending approval of their background investigation is, you know, for the hire. So you have, like I said, Captain Ringley, Sheridan is doing all our background investigations, not only for officers, but also for our dispatch.
So are there any, what interests going on?
Not that I'm aware of. What conflict of interest?
Hiring yourself?
I.
If conflict of interest, you being a mayor and running a city employee?
He has a direct supervisor, which is why the chief is out on medical leave, needs a surgeon, and then there's the police committee. So I have no, plus I was not the one that made the motion, and I did not vote for him to be a police officer or council.
There's no corruption in the city council.
I'm sorry. Moving on to number two, Newcastle utility increases. I believe there's quite a bit of you out there in regards to the water increases. Is there someone that would like to be the main speaker or the group that's here? Or can we answer some questions for you?
I was just curious to see why this sudden increase that couldn't be done incrementally? Is there any great, just, fair reason that y'all can come up with for me?
So, this is a hard time of the year to.
Anytime in this economical situation is hard.
I understand that. So, in order to operate a utility like the city does, right? You have to run it like a business. So they're called enterprise accounts, right? And we've been operating at a really low rate for years and years and years. 50% of our water distribution system is concrete asbestos. And it's starting to outlive its useful life, right? So that means, you know, interruptions due to water name breaks. You know, it's not a good and appropriate material to use for a water distribution system anymore. So I used to work for the city shop for nine years. I mean, we got our guys having to respond to disproportionate number of breaks every year because of this old material. And our sewer system is dilapidated. We've been running on clay tile sewer systems. We had a, one of our constituents come in the other day, their whole basement flooded, you know, from having a sewer backup. So this has been kicked down the road for years and years and years. And I know it seems like it's just getting dropped on y'all all of a sudden, but we're still.
No, it doesn't seem, it is getting dropped.
Well.
In 19 was the last rate increase. And there hasn't been no re-increase.
And it was a small bump.
So what happened to increasing from then until now in the last five years, four years?
So now, we're coming, it's coming to a head, okay? So we're having more and more problems. The price of everything due to inflation is going up. It's hard for, you know, it's hard for a family to live, right? It's hard for an organization like the city to live too. Like, we need to provide water out of your cap, right, safe, clean drinking water. We need to have a place for your waste bill. The infrastructure has been forgotten for years. It's gotten to a point, well.
Is that not you guys as a city council? How many years have you been here?
I've been on the city council for two and a half years.
So where has it been the last two and a half years, if you don't mind me asking?
Well.
Not a priority?
No.
So all of a sudden, it is today, or this last two months?
It's been a priority. When I got on the city council, two and a half years ago, I was an advocate for looking at our rates. So it takes a long time to get anything done, right? So we've gotten to this point, right, where we need to take care of our infrastructure. We have a bunch of loans through the state SRF program that need to be paid. And we got a bunch of grant money. Our public works supervisor has been doing really good work with getting us some grants through the state to take care of some of these problems, some of these problem areas. You live in the same neighborhood as me, we're gonna, we have a good, like, Duff Avenue. There's a sewer replacement and a lift station replacement that's going to go in over there. Seventh Avenue, they've had habitual land breaks even from when I was with the city shop. That meant that the citizens over there had to go without water routinely. And then, just like I said, I mean, the cost of everything is going up, to test the water, everything, so.
I know there was some issues with testing.
Yeah.
You guys, there was something that fell by the wayside, so that would probably increase your testing increments, which would increase the cost also.
So.
Given certain entities.
They've been taking care of the water testing. So to answer your question, the rates needed to be increased. This is a hard time of the year to do it because everybody's irrigating heavily. Some people water their yards and dump, you know, 30,000, 40,000 gallons of water onto their yards. And that comes with wear and tear on the system. You know, all of these components that are under the ground that are forgotten about, right? Need to be replaced, you know, routinely. And we're behind the power curve, really far behind the power curve. So it's necessary that we raise the rates to take care of our infrastructure.
But this couldn't have done any more gradually?
You raised the rates. Gradual came also with the inflation rate. The last two and a half years have been the largest inflation rate that this country has seen.
I don't think anyone's pay skill has covered that either, so you guys.
Neither has the cities, and as a matter of fact, our money to share with all the different departments of the city has gone down from the state.
You raised it 100%, though, I mean, that's crazy. I mean, people can't afford that. I think what you're going to see, me included, a lot of people here, their water bills doubled. I'm not going to pay double. I'm going to quit watering. My lawn's going to be brown, and you're going to get that back. You're going to get a lot of that back, you're going to get less revenue. So maybe it's going to backfire on you, and you aren't going to get the revenue you want to get. I mean, people don't want to pay 100% more for water. You're talking about wear and tear on your pipes. One of the biggest wear and tear people here is the city. I live next to a cemetery. And I'll guarantee you, I can look out my window anytime, almost daily, and see three broken pipes, water shooting 25 feet in the air. One one inch, all those are one inch over there. In the half hour, that's like 3,000 gallons out of one. I can see three from my window. I can't even see half the cemetery. You guys waste more water than anybody in town. And you're talking about wear and tear on the pipes, shit, that water's streaming 25 feet in the air. It's rushing through those pipes, you know, several of them.
We didn't increase water 850%.
Well, mine though.
Mine though. That's due to usage, so you're paying for it.
I looked at a bill from last year, the same usage, it's double.
Because you increased over 2,000 gallons, you guys increased it from $3.00 and some odd cents up to $7.00 as a flat rate. So anything over 2,000 gallons, you guys are basically penalizing us for using.
Yeah.
That new water system over there where you live, those houses aren't even hooked up to a meter. How on earth could they raise triple when there's not even a meter? You guys are encouraging them to water all that new sod over there. Well, if it's not going to get watered, you just wasted all that money for sod.
I'm going to throw that thing out.
That was part of the defamation of the construction project, and that's pretty typical of it.
But you also encourage them to water.
I'll bet you the cemetery has 20 times the amount of watering that I have. And they water, I water every other day. They water every day. So take that times 40 times what I use, my water bill is $300. So take that times 40, that's $12,000. I know the city owns the water, so they don't have to pay for it. But if you had to pay somebody for that water, you would not pay $12,000 just for the cemetery alone. You would shut it off. And I'm all for keeping the cemetery green, I'm not knocking keeping it cemetery green. But I mean, I'm just putting in relative what they waste over there and what they use over there. I remember a day, the sprinkler that ran for five days, those sprinklers came on every night. You have no way to shut that off for a few days? I mean, what a waste of water.
Sorry, if you see a popped sprinkler head, could you call the city office and let them know that you see it?
I have called so many times, I ain't kidding you, my wife will attest to it. There have been like, some of those have been broke for four or five days. I have one where I told employees, I walked into the cemetery and told them, physically told them, yeah, we know what's wrong, we got a flag over there. They don't do a damn thing about it. I mean, put a plug on it. They make plugs that you can screw into a damn pipe and shut it off. Order some of them, if you ain't got time to put a new head on there, at least stop the water from wasting the water. I'd love to have all the water you guys waste over there. It would easily water my lawn and then some, probably several lawns in this town. It's ridiculous.
Were you guys aware that this was going to happen?
No.
No.
So it's been talked about since, April, May? It's been talked about since May. It was in the newspaper several times. I want to say, because I'm looking at the July 27th paper, there was a big article about the council approved increases. And we talked about it on the 17th. It said that it was going to pass on two more readings on August 17th and August 23rd before the rates would take effect. My bills went up too, just like everybody else on the council.
Have you gotten your bill?
On what?
Have you gotten your bill?
I did.
Okay.
Mine was $181.43.
Mine, at least $500.
I'm not pouring the water to my yard, though. I've been watering, I have a little garden with water. But I, what's that?
I'd love to pay that.
I think everybody knew a raise was coming, but I don't think they, like I say.
No, it was a percentage.
Well, you do not expect what's coming your way. You want this to be a retirement community. But you've got a lot of people that that's a pretty good hit between medicine and other obligations they have. Because a lot of their wages are nothing.
Well, you guys talk about beautifying the city too, and a lot of people, last time, that little raise, I know people that quit watering, I know people that travel there, a couple people. You're going to get a lot more with this doubling it, and the city's going to be browner, you know? It isn't going to look as good, I can guarantee it.
Your trees are all going to be dead, and the property value is not going to be there any longer. I don't know if you all consider that as a possibility.
But at the same time, you know, we aren't the city. We are elected, we got it, you are the city, and you want your sewers fixed. And you want your mains fixed when they break. And you want the valves done properly, you want the meters to run properly, you want. And we don't do this deliberately as if to punish anybody. We're trying to balance the system so we can pay to fix your sewers.
There could have been some courtesy to have a gradual increase even a year ago and increase them that way. To all of a sudden double or triple people's bills, and yes, the newspaper is great, but in honesty, who reads the newspaper? Everything is online.
Everybody knows that we are by law required to put what we do in that newspaper.
I agree.
Okay, and so why would they go look for the newspaper?
Nobody has Facebook, internet.
Well, if you can mail out a DEQ saying what our water is, you can mail out something saying the prices are going to increase.
Especially by this percent.
That's a good point.
Given the example, I mean, I don't think anybody knew double was coming, you know?
No, no.
If you give an example of a bill in there, maybe people would know what to expect.
And they would have cut back accordingly, so they weren't shocked by that.
The base rate was raised by $6.00 and some odd cents for the base rate for 2,000 gallons. It was a 20% increase. If we would have done this during the winter, I don't think you guys would be as upset because you would have had time to brace for the water and irrigation.
So where was that consideration for right now? Or why did you decide that we need to charge $7.00 a gallon for every 1,000 gallons, or $7.00 every 1,000 gallons after that base rate? Because that's where the sticker shot comes into play.
So at the old base, right, it was like $13.30. That was for 2,000 gallons, right? So that'd been like $6.15 or $6.30 per thousand, right?
Right.
So, and then we did have a tiered system, right? Well, the thing is, is even where we're at, right? We're still, our base rate is still well lower than the state average. The state average for a base rate.
It's $23.00.
Is $43.00 for the base rate. So other communities in Wyoming.
Allow up to 10,000 gallons.
They're, see, you can't compare like every community, because it's apples to apples, right? Because everybody has different operating expenses, right? They have different places where they source their water.
So you guys are going to need $110,000 a month, whereas your own comparisons in Morecroft are going to need $73,000 or $56,000. Okay, you guys have over, we have twice the amount of taps in Newcastle as we do in any of these other cities. So you're saying you need almost double the revenue?
We have to double the lines and double the sewers and double all the other things too.
Yeah, you were right. How many people raise their rate? How many people raise their rates this dramatically in one go?
When you're talking about getting something done, another thing I wanna bring up, like related to this, the dump station out here by the park, it has been broke all summer. How many people in this community have campers? And I mean, somebody comes through this town, and you guys wanna make this town look good and sound good and whatever. They can't even dump their campers here. It's ridicu-, that's a, I could, I could take one of my sons and go over there and fix that in half a day, two of us. Somebody on the council here told me they can't get the park. You want the bomb jars to get that water shut off. It's ridiculous. I mean, it's crazy. I just don't have confidence in the city workers here. It's just, I don't, I don't know. It's ridiculous. How come we let it get, I mean, we did, what, ten years ago, they did the two upper streets there in front here? You know how much it costs then? Sure, everything went up, but why are we letting it get to the point it's a catastrophe before we're gonna address it? Why didn't we do, I'm not, you weren't all on the council back then, but why did it get so bad?
There's a lot, like Councilman Owen said, decades of neglect.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, with the council that you have before you, are the ones advocating the work of the decades of neglect, and so we need to learn.
We're trying to do something about it. Like, it needs to be done. This needs to be fixed, or else the next person who inherits this is gonna have an even bigger problem. Like, it needs fixed. I was waiting around in the bottom of these manholes, you know? I was dealing with these water breaks in the middle of the night. This needs fixed.
I'm just telling you where I'm at.
I understand, it's hard.
It is, it's hard enough to pay a big bill.
You're not gonna be in any better shape, cause you're not gonna get the revenue from that, you know? I guarantee you, a lot of people are gonna quit watering.
We adjusted, we adjusted the base rate to account for that, so we're already, being that we increased the base rate.
They're strong under the pain for all of their stuff regardless, that's what I'm saying.
So you don't, you can limit your water usage so that you don't have to pay as much next bill.
I can limit it, I'm just using what I need to do.
So, but the base rate has been increased so that we'll still make more revenue, and we'll be able to put towards what we need to fix in the city.
Is there going to be another increase? Not for water, but for, um, energy or anything?
Can you say that, though? Is there going to be another increase on water?
No.
No. You don't know that, though, right?
As of right now, I, well, no.
I mean, don't, let us switch your words. Make sure you get that.
That would definitely be something to look at, to know if we need to raise the amount. But I can tell you that there is gonna be another increase.
There are water bills that don't show your usage on the bill.
That does.
That does. That does. It shows previous reading, and last reading, and how many gallons in between.
We got one right here, don't show any of it.
Lower the fitting cord. Okay. But I realized I had nine thousand gallon increases passed by in my building, and it's like, where did this all go? It couldn't have just been a toilet, so.
It's a pretty good shop.
Yeah. That's where a lot of my problems came in, so I, yeah, I'm going through my building like crazy right now.
Why can't this be a gradual increase?
If you guys are all in here for at least another year through two thousand twenty-four, you have another year.
So I heard that Pam needed and requested, let's do a gradual increase, so it's not all of a sudden. And why did we go all of a sudden?
So it was necessary because of some of the items that we were able to get grant money for, some of the projects that were.
Explain that, okay? We have to pay. We don't get a hundred percent grants ever.
So there's a portion of the grant that we have to pay back.
The project is three million dollars. This city, your city, has to come up with X amount of dollars to get this portion of this street or this water system fixed, but we still have to pay that other amount, cash money.
Let's also finish the projects that we've started, so the streets still not having to go around J-bays.
Oh, you're talking about the project builder on South Summit?
You drive by it every day.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, let's finish it. Let's finish these water projects. Let's put a Dun stamp on them.
How many addresses is the emergency fund?
What's that?
What happened to the emergency balance?
And that's another thing, okay? So a water system should have ten percent of the total value of the system put back in reserves, so that we can take care of. Um, should, should. It's not a requirement. So, um, we haven't been putting back any money in reserves. How much?
So why does it say on the Wyoming Water Development Commission, the Water Systems Report, that you guys have one point five million in your emergency fund and three hundred and seventy-one thousand in the sinking fund?
Well, and then that, that's another thing too, so emergency versus a scheduled and planned event. You can't be spending your emergency reserves.
Well, when these water lines are breaking, that you're emergent.
I know, and so we fix, we fix them. We fix them when they break, right? And that, we have to do that out of our budget. So, I mean, and like you said, I mean, that one year, we had twenty-seven main breaks. And that's just ridiculous. I'm a technical assistance provider for work, and I go around the whole state, and I talk to communities about just what we're talking about right now. And everybody kicks the can down the road, and nobody puts back money in reserves to take care of problems. It's very few times that I'm into a community that has all their ducks in a row, and what we're trying to do is to get our ducks in a row. Our public works supervisor has a capital improvements plan now, so that we can start to plan these construction events, and we can start to systematically replace some of the components in our water system, and we can start to replace roads, and we can replace the sewer system, and then our city will flourish eventually. This is, this is a little, you know, hitch in the giddyup, right, and it sucks.
So how do other communities feel if their city council decided to raise their rates?
I had a small water system, I had a small water system that hadn't looked at their rates in twenty years.
Okay, well, you guys just did it four years ago, so this is.
It was a small, it was a small increase four years ago, and it wasn't paying the bills.
Well, then maybe there should have been a series of small ones between now and then.
I don't know, and I wasn't on the council then.
Well, you're the spokesperson, you're speaking for everyone else, so therefore the questions are directed to you.
Okay.
Apparently, no one's pulling their pants up when answering questions.
I'm trying to explain it to you.
If anybody else has been here longer than you, feel free.
It has, it has been discussed, especially even before Ty was here, that it needed to be increased. But the council at that time didn't wanna increase because they didn't wanna upset the citizens. So they made a motion to not increase.
So you guys just decided that it was gonna be a crazy increase now?
I, our council did make that motion. I'm not saying too much because I was against the whole increase. So, um, not to make our council look bad, it needed.
Well, they were the ones that made the decision. It wasn't just Ty.
It was the council made a decision on what was needed for this city to do the work that needs to be done. And unfortunately, like I said, a lot of us came in and we have to fix what our four authors did.
Right, I agree with that.
But I, I.
Don't dispute that, stuff needs fixing.
I agree that I would have wanted it to be retro. But I can't answer a hundred percent to the urgency of having it all at once. So, um, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Concerning projects and funding projects, the two grants we got are our funds. So Biden basically, Biden and the Congress put together a package. They sent us the order to people like us to get funding for it. We get as much as we can afford, even if we couldn't afford any grant matches. We've got another bill coming down at us, BIL, and there's millions and millions of dollars of funding. It's, state's actually bringing twenty-five percent up. It was supposed to be fifty-fifty, but. State went ahead and put up a twenty-five percent more, seventy-five, twenty-five for us. We don't have the money for grants. We can't match the funds we need after doing two projects. The two projects we are planning for next year, we can't even apply for the money right now. Another thing with the funding, a lot of the grants have gone away. Neural royalty grants are no longer, incentives funding, we pay for the front end, the frontieration roads. That money's gone. We just keep wiping them off. Right now, in the funding of it then, an unprecedented grant package is SRF, I mean, state revolving funds. Right now, it's fifty-fifty. We pay fifty, they pay fifty, and we get paid back. Our portion is a loan, and we have to pay that back. Starts at one percent, increases to ten percent every twenty-five years. With the increases we're seeing, exponential increases in projects, trying to get any kind of money. We've got to be able to prove that we can pay back the loans for SRF. So we have to have that money in place before we can apply for the SRF funds. One project right now we're working on, two years ago, the engineer's estimate was two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. It's a pump station upgrade, and, or pump station upgrades. We just got the new engineer's estimate at four hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. Because of that, I'm gonna go back to Cheyenne and see if I can get some more funding for this, but I can only go to like fifteen percent funding request. It's an additional seventeen thousand dollars. But this will be a loan. We have already an SRF loan through the sewer system for the. The Goon cleaning, it's maybe a decade, because they're, yeah, it's been a long. Uh, Goon cleaning, they built the new cells in nineteen eighty-one. They were supposed to clean that in there twenty. So that was, it should have been two thousand one, right? We cleaned it in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. So, and it just, like Tye said, can just keeps getting kicked down the road. And at some point, council has to, a lot has to stop something. Looking at our funding, payback for being able to prove, payback the loans and be able to pay back the loans that are available every year. That's where we based everything off of. And actually, we'll, we can just barely do that with the increases in our interannual budget. Water sampling alone, five years ago was eight thousand dollars, five years from the budget. I requested nineteen thousand dollars, I think. Water sampling, your monthly water sampling, we paid eighty-eight dollars, we paid a hundred and, a hundred and forty something now. Monthly water. Water meters, two-inch water meter, pre-COVID, that was twenty-one hundred dollars all day long. You could basically say we're paying the same, we're paying the same inflation issue.
I know, but none of us are paying for two-inch meters as a residential customer. So that is not terribly applicable to most of our situations.
And residential meters have gone up.
To one-eighth, Stacy told me earlier. What about a half-inch meter?
Huh?
Half-inch meter?
There are no half-inch meters.
What is half-inch lines?
Uh, three-quarter inch meters, what you have in your house.
No, it's not.
Do you have an inch meter, then?
No.
Or five-eighths?
No.
Do you have a half-inch meter?
They would be smaller, unless that's what our lines are.
I installed meters, I'm sorry, like.
It might be that big of a meter, but the lines coming into our house is not.
They discontinued half-inch meters here, so we're going through. There may be half-inch lines, but the three-quarter inch meters.
Yeah.
And, and believe me, nobody wanted to do this. This is the toughest thing for the council to do. It's the toughest thing for me to ask the council. But at some point, I mean, Delaware Avenue, we've got a project down there, five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. There's a section of that pipe I can't turn back on without replacing that section because the type of failure that we saw in the AC pipe, it's delamity. If there's, it's delamity for certain places. Three hundred, four hundred feet away, we saw another delamity pipe. Uh, four is still away, we just dug it up and put it in tap. We couldn't even cut the pipe like we normally do because it's so soft. It just crushed. And, yes.
Well, Greg, didn't you say too that, I think you just said that, but. So these people, we apply for grants, they look at us to see if we can afford to pay it back, because they're not gonna give us a grant if we don't have any money. And we, and so they look at how much we're charging to our customers. And if we're not at a certain rate, we're gonna say, there's, there's no way. You're never gonna get that money to pay these back.
Right, well, I agree that a rate increase needed, was necessary.
And I understand, believe me, I understand you guys. I mean, I feel bad, I feel sorry for the elderly that are living on social security. I feel terrible. We are caught. We, as a city council, we're gonna go down in history saying they're the ones that did it. But we can also say they're the ones that didn't do it. So I'm sorry, I really, really am. I'm right there with you. I'm having to pay it.
Well, it's not just me, you're gonna have to say sorry to it.
I mean, I am, believe me, I'm not just saying it to you. I'm having to pay that too. But I'm paying. This is my home.
They got to fix the pipe. They won't finish it out. The DC gravel, we done our, about two years with our neighbors. It's washing down the street, which was dug by, by gravel.
And Walker Avenue.
Walker, we had two places, they're free. They dug them out, put gravel in, walked off, and left them.
Yeah, no, it's.
It needs the other.
That's been an ongoing issue, having people to go back and patch the spaces.
Well, you've got enough people to come by and watch the other people.
Yeah.
You get, yeah, there's nobody, nobody watches.
They had one guy working, made you guys watching it. He's doing that very.
And a couple chicks on the side, and so. No, not a chick.
One guy was walking one of them campers, wrestling them as much as he could, cause they had to go up a little bit. And two guys sitting in, back, forward, and two of them went going. Anyway, it's two different guys sitting in machines watching it. Boy, you're a nice guy, just sitting there. He was wrestling them to be that good.
Let this guy work all by himself, neighbor.
I guess their term is next. Took a whole week to dig that out and fix it.
Yeah, remove it out.
Then neighbor said he, he still didn't get the water, come to find out it's stuff in his, in the bottom.
We've taken a lot of steps to try to like improve our infrastructure.
There's gravel.
On the council. I mean, we've got asset management software now so that we can start to take a look at our, our whole distribution and rewatching system, and try to figure out where our shortfalls are so that we can do our capital improvements. I mean, when I was working on the city shop, we have hot soils here, and we have valves that have been on the ground for fifty years. And when you go to shut off a valve, and then all the bolts on the bonnet pop, when you're trying to isolate a main so that you can fix it, and then all of a sudden you have another leak, you know? It's, it's.
Is there a map and schedule of lines?
That's, that's what the capital improvement plan is.
But, I mean, you guys have a plan for that.
Yeah.
Like, like you should have this, already a plan before this rate increase, right?
The rate increase is part of the plan. The rate increase is part of the plan.
Right.
So what are we doing next year?
Uh, that's a good question. Greg has got a capital improvements plan. We got a grant through the Water Development Commission so that we could improve our, or do a level one study of our whole system so that we can identify these problem areas.
How much did the study cost?
The study was a grant through the WWDC.
Actually, WDC pays for the full.
Hundred, hundred percent grant, so that we can look at this. So that we can look at this and try to get it fixed. Like, we're, we're trying to fix it.
We don't already know where our problem areas are? We got to pay everybody to fight it for us?
We know where some are. They're looking at Kelsey's laws, her family member that built We know where it crushes.
I worked on it at break in Dean Johnson. I worked, I worked on it about four times myself.
Exactly.
What did it still go up to?
We've had issues on First Avenue that flooded departments. We did an emergency
I worked on those too.
We've had issues on Seventh Avenue. We're doing a project person of this whole thing that we're looking at to move forward with projects at worst-case areas. From Seventh Avenue all the way to Second Avenue, First Avenue, from this line we just replaced on First Avenue. It's over seven million dollars for that project. And when we can't show that we are trying to help ourselves with the city. When we go to try to give grant money for that big ticket items. Are we going to do Seventh through Fifth Avenue, fix the problem that's on Seventh Avenue, slowly work through? Those are the things, decisions we have to make to figure out where our problem areas are and attack them first. This lift station on Duff Avenue was a problem. This water line over there that you guys are dealing with now was a problem in front of your relatives' place. And every fall or springtime, they were down there fixing that lot, band-aid fixing.
Yeah, how much money is getting spent for overtime?
For the band-aids.
For the band-aids.
And that's what we were looking at as a council is we got to quit doing these band-aid fixes. We've got to go in there and bail it off. And it's a hard pill to swallow. I, I understand that because the cost for me doing water lines where I work at has almost doubled to a project that I wanted to do. Now we look at this same way in the city. And those prices for parts and piping and contractor to come in and do this work has doubled in cost after twenty-twenty. You know, it's not what we used to be able to go in and bid projects out for, but we, we don't want to be able to give a citizen, hey, we just, we can't go fix this. But next year, you guys are facing another digging up their yard. And why, why do we have to keep digging up my yard? Why can't you fix this the first time?
And some of these big projects are planning to do it the right way.
Yes.
So while we're still having to do some band-aids in other areas, we're working on projects by doing it the right way. I've seen in the past where they fixed a road, but then they're tearing it up because of water line. So we're trying to get it internally fixed in the outside. So, um,
The idea is to try to fix all of the infrastructure under a street before you put a new street on it. You know, so it, I mean, you can't go as far as fast, but it's done right. And then we don't have to revisit that, you know, and dig up what was just replaced.
The problem is some of this stuff that you do dig up and they fix and they patch and repair. The road ends up suffering every time after it. You're right back to a big old ditch that you're trying to avoid with your car. It's never repatched back to where it makes any sense. Up above Williams, you're dodging and there's no place else to dodge.
They're on Wood Street.
Wood Street's awful. It needs fixed. Uh, rodeo, it was awful. I, I worked on the patching crew around this town too. And you know the guy, the guy that you're talking about that was running the whacker? And everybody else was watching him? I was that guy. Yeah, I was the guy trying to patch the street. And trying to do the best I could. And, you know, I stand by some of my patches. There's one over on Cambria that I did the right way, good base course underneath, put it back right. There's not a pothole one in it, there's not a crack.
No.
Yeah. So I, I mean, we're, we're doing the best we can with what we got.
How can Greg supervise all of these workers and write grants and try to maintain all of the equipment and all these leaks?
That's a good question. There's a lot of hacks that Greg does. Um, there's been a lot of problems since I've been on the council too. I mean, since you brought up the point, we had an engineer, right? Who wasn't doing any engineering. And he resigned. So then, now it's fallen on Greg because we don't have an engineer to replace him. And we came up with a different idea that's worked for other towns, right? So, um, a lot of other towns use what they call a city administrator. We called it a town planner so that we wouldn't have to change the entire government of our city to accommodate the position. But we, we were, we were still paying for engineering even when we had an engineer on staff. So we were trying to reevaluate the situation, though the trouble is, is nobody's applying for the position. I mean, there's been a few applications, but
Well, we had applications, but I don't think they were really allowed.
Yeah, and then we were getting international applications from like Abu Dhabi.
Oh, yeah, remember this, we got one from Pakistan.
Um, we do, we do have an interim engineer right now.
Yeah, Chuck Bartlett has been
And he's been a huge help to me. Uh, I kick a lot of things over the jug to work on, uh, the land sales that we have for the city. He's the primary one working on it. He got proposals put together and anything like that. He's actually doing quite a bit of engineering for us right now as well. There's a couple of projects that we're looking at. Instead of hiring an engineer to go work on it, he's been taking care of that along with numerous other things. Back to your question about what we're doing next. We, I can show you the plan if you want to stop that or it's a little too thick to try and go through at a council meeting. We're waiting on our master plan to identify certain projects we do, we do need to, tank two is one of them. Through the inspections of, the last two inspections of the tanks, which we inspect them every five years, the coating, interior, stuff like that. We've identified that we need a reco-tank two, uh, the orange tank up on the hill. You're probably looking at six, seven-hundred-thousand-dollar coating project alone. We have some other issues with the tank that we have to address. So before we can put a whole bunch of stuff together and show you the twenty-year plan, we can't get, we have to get this master plan done. Because the last master plan they did in two thousand, they didn't look at tank two that heavily. There's issues with that tank. Tank number one, tan tank up on eighty-five. The only thing we can figure out is that it was probably built in nineteen thirty-two, thirty, early nineteen thirties. With the degradation on it, and councilman Stevens personally bought it with four hundred and four patches we had welded on before it lasted. It's ready to be replaced. You're probably looking at a six, seven-million-dollar project. So try and, try and figure out how to pay for these over long-term because of these costs. And making loan paybacks on a six, seven-million-dollar project. Other communities, they're actually taking on loans of two forty-five, fifty million dollars. Town of Upton, they're looking at their water infrastructure and trying to get it all done at one time. They're looking at a twelve million, twelve million dollar project right now. And you got to look at how you're going to pay that back. Cause you can't prove, you can't pay it. If there's no proof that you can pay the loan back, they're not going to give you the loan in the first place.
I'm working with a small community right now that has a population around a hundred people. Their median household income, talking about like fixed incomes, right? Twenty-eight thousand dollars is the median household income in this community. They need their water distribution system and their collection system replaced. And two years ago, it bid out at nine million dollars for a full replacement of both. And now it's nineteen million dollars. So they're begging for money from the state. They have to reevaluate their rates. There's nobody in that town that, that can afford to pay any more than what they're paying right now. So it's a, it's a total conundrum. So, I mean, it's, but they have to prove that they can at least pay on the loan or else they're not going to get their infrastructure replaced. It just seems hopeless, you know, but, I mean, we're just trying to better our town.
The only thing is it's water that you're using, like to water a yard or all that kind of stuff. And I don't ever want people to just shut off their water because our town will look terrible.
What's going to happen?
Just cut back. You know, I think we all overwater our yards.
Will you look at this year? We've had more rain this year than how many years?
We have, but not this last month when this is what you're comparing your, your bill to.
Mine usage is the same average as the prior two months.
Mine hasn't been that all.
Mine is.
No, I, I should water every day, but I water every other day.
So do I.
I can't afford to water every day.
And maybe
I mean, but the old rate.
No, I, I totally get it. I'm right there with you. I water every other day too.
Yeah.
And I've got brown, brown spots in my yard.
Yeah.
But I'm not going to let it die. I just think we just need to be careful. We need to be smart stewards of our own money and, and maybe budget a little better. I don't know. At least now, maybe we should have done this in the winter time when you aren't going to see this.
Or sent it to a post guard with the last one.
Okay, we didn't do that. So we're into fall, you're going to quit, you're going to cut back on your watering anyway, so your bill's going to come down. Um, I'm just, I'm just
My water bill in the winter was over eighty-five dollars last year. So now it's going to still be over, what, a hundred and twenty easily?
Well, okay.
But are you, your water sewer and garbage that was eighty-five dollars or just your water bill specifically?
Beg your pardon?
Was it, was it, were you paying eighty-five dollars right, eighty-five dollar checks to the city?
Across the board, so it's going to be even higher.
Yeah, yeah, so that's a combination of all three utilities.
Right, but my sewer went from twenty-nine dollars to seventy this last month. And the water alone went from, what, eighty dollars to a hundred and eighty? This is kind of a big chunk of money that you guys just, with a snap of the fingers, decided that we're all going to have to buck up. That's all I'm saying. That is where my main strife arises from.
And then we better be seeing improvements with our money and getting things done and actually getting all of this fixed.
That's, that's my whole intent.
You guys were asking us to suck it up and make the cuts we need to make with the watering and everything else. Well, maybe with some of these problems we heard about watering at the cemetery set. Maybe there needs to be some sucking up on what happens with the performance of what's going on in the city. And they need to make cuts where they can make them.
It's a very good observation.
That is very good.
You'd like to see it go up to Del Park, that thing is beautiful green. How much water is going to be used on that? I don't like being in council, I don't think, it really needs water every day. But the cemetery gets watered every day, you know, it's, it, you know, yeah, parks probably do. I mean, it's like if we
I mean, and those are visual places. I mean, so that's what people see, that's when they come to town, they see those things. I think we can all keep up our yards the best we can, as much as we can. I guess just do what we can do.
It's kind of hard because the city itself, it's like, excuse my language, damn it, if you do, damn if you don't. Um, we get upset if there's, we set the cemetery. So then we send everybody over there to take care of the cemetery. And for us, it's bad at the cemetery. We get complaints, um, everywhere. And when you try to fix it, something else gets conflicted while you're fixing that. So it's, it's like a never-ending winning game. And so we are trying to figure out a plan where it would be better for not only the city workers, the council, but for the community. Um, it's just kind of figuring out what is that plan, what's going to work and what's not going to work.
It's in the works.
Yeah. So, I mean,
But I'm like Kelsey, I think, I mean, you know, you guys deserve to see some improvement, that's for sure.
Thank you all for coming very much, so.
So all the water districts that have owned water off the city of Newcastle, are their rates going to go up next contract?
Mine did. Going up a hundred and fifty dollars, salt-free water.
To answer your question, yes. We lifted all the contract rates and raised them. All, all the same are similar amount.
Is that that eleven dollars base rate for outside of town?
Uh, actually, those are contracts. So they negotiated.
No, he's for Is that the water district?
Yeah.
Right, but you have
That particular eleven dollars is not the water district. What he's telling me is that, that's a different contract that, that you don't have a copy of. And we, we would raise their rates as well, as well as the refinery and
We, we had a whole bunch of contracts with different entities around the city that hadn't been renewed since the early two thousands, twenty sixteen. So we, now we're having our attorney reevaluate those contracts so that they're paying a fair wage.
And some of these, and some of these contracts have not, but we didn't know about. Uh, which is our fault for not, um, doing our research. But something would come up and we would look, and that's when we would find out that we have a contract and we need to change it. Is there any other questions we can try and answer for you or interpret?
I guess I would suggest maybe putting an ad in a paper or on Facebook or something where there is traction and people see it publicly. That, you know, these are the rates and maybe here's some explanations for these.
Where would you put it online if you were
Newcastle Talk of the Town.
Say again?
Newcastle Talk of the Town.
I'm on there all the time.
And you'll have seen my post. And the thirty, whatever, maybe eighteen comments that people have left there or more.
Knowing just what makes us so hard, this president we got, everything's gone up fifty to a hundred percent. Every time you turn it like weekly, there's something that gets raised, you know, and people are just getting tired of it, I think. Uh, you know, it's just like watering it, like you say, it looks nice, but it's something you don't have to have, you know? And I, this is what I, I'm still going back to that, I'm thinking a lot of people are going to quit watering. I mean, I, I, I really do. That's, that's my concern. Uh, cause I don't think they're going to want to spend that kind of money on it.
Well, but a lot of them cannot.
No, well, exactly, yeah, some of them cannot.
You know, you have fire hazard? Kind of dying out?
Yeah, we'll just see.
Do you have a hot summer next year?
Is the month of September free dump month if you bring in your water bill? I think that should be posted on the water bill so people are aware of it.
That was in the paper a couple of months ago.
Yeah, I like that.
And then everybody wants to get it. And when people are cutting costs and people are not going to spend money on the paper, it's what they're going to see on Facebook. I, I, I know newspaper is the official representation, but typically, fire starters cheaper than all.
We have Facebook page?
Yes.
And you have a Newcastle City Office page that does not have updated rates. It has two thousand seventeen rates.
Our web, we do have a website that's going to be, that is in the works, um, with a local person who built our website.
We'll have a nice website soon, that's something else that we
Well, nice or not, just something officially a notification.
Yeah, yeah, accurate information. That'll be updated on the regular, yeah.
And it'll be something that, um, the city office will be able to go in and make changes because the, um, the website we have now, we can't
Doesn't work very good.
So, um, there's a company, I believe, that we have to access to be able to get the changes in there. So we are rerouting and building a new website where we can take turns instead of having to go through different parties to get things done.
Makes sense.
I will, um, we will work on getting, um, the printout with your water bill on social media as well as, um, the next rate increase when it comes to the garbage.
Do you know what that rate increase will be?
I think it was twenty percent across the board, is that correct, Greg? I think it was twenty percent across the board. Is that correct, Greg?
Yes, it'll be around two dollars, thirty-five cents.
Residential containers will go up to twenty dollars. A container versus sixteen is actually high.
And it, I was sort of thinking that there's an increase in the garbage rates.
Hydraulic fluid?
What's that?
Hydraulic fluid.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
That was a good one. So, no, we have two landfill remediation.
There's puddles every time the urban truck drives past my house to pick up a dumpster.
I mean, I was really dry humor. I did appreciate it.
Anytime.
We have two landfill remediation projects going on right now. We have landfill number one where the shooting range is at. That needs to be closed. And it set the tune of, what was it, like two or three million dollars, Greg?
Oh, that was prior to two thousand.
Oh, great.
Yeah, we're probably looking at around four million dollars for the project, we're guessing.
And then landfill number two was slated to be closed soon?
Yeah, the state's gonna pay seventy-five percent. We're gonna pay, we have to pay twenty-three percent for that project.
Haven't there separate property taxes that was funded there? Or something through the county commissioners?
No, you're talking the new land.
Western, uh, Western County Solid Waste District. And they're actually digging on it. My parents' place is down south of town. So we're gonna be, uh, my folks are gonna be right downwind of the new landfill.
Good thing property value is up right now.
To explain, one department of environmental quality decided they wanted to regionalize all the landfills. So they're gonna help us close ours as long as we can regionalize our area. The way that everybody decided to regionalize was the county sort of land, solid waste district. But it means that we have to close ours. If we close it now, we get, we get help with the funding. We don't know how much yet. But we have closed landfill number two, the one we're currently using. We're estimating, well, the original estimate was two point two million dollars, but that was in like two thousand fifteen. So you can, with everything else, you can see the trend. It's gonna be four, five million, six million dollars by the time we get it closed. How much we have to pay on that, I'm not sure yet. I haven't heard what, anything's gonna help. Landfill number one remediation project is to stop, again, our four factors, leaching water. Contaminated leaching water into the, into their outfit. We're looking at the cheapest thing we could. We're gonna be on the hook for twenty-five percent of whatever the project is. Both projects are mandated. We don't get to say when those happen. And all the state cares about is that the projects get done. We have to figure out the funding. And from what I can see, there wasn't enough money set back for these projects. I guess we're looking at SRF funding, clean water funding for this, so it's gonna be informal.
So where did all the city's money go in these twenty years? It sure didn't go up the streets.
No. Different places.
We published it, we did, huh?
We don't need any more parks.
We're not getting any more.
You better not.
There might be a dog park.
Red, white, and blue parks. You can probably sell that, put houses in there and make some more income.
Well, we went into the housing one time, we just built a little cul-de-sac up there behind Deckers, and then we didn't make a nickel on it. We don't do that anymore.
A whole new real estate market now. Welcome to two thousand twenty-three.
Biden, Biden world. Didn't do anything.
Back this on the morning.
Is there anything else that requires to, the utility increases? We will do a better job at trying to fit it out to all, all in the community.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
If there's nothing else.
But when you're not transparent about it, it, it feels like you have something to hide. And if you would have just put this out into the sunlight, then all of this wouldn't have been an issue at all. And, and that's probably one of the most frustrating things is these. And, and we're not trying to invoke that. We're not trying to create that situation. We're just trying to do our job to make sure that people have that, you know, clear, correct, verified information and, and make sure that, you know, there isn't anything that needs to be told.
I can't count how many times I've had to have that conversation through our lawsuit with the commissioners, through the issues we've had with our police department in Newcastle multiple times. I've had that conversation. Like, we can stop this while it's a snowball, before it becomes a snowman.
Move on to Mayor, Councilmember reports. Number one is parking on Seneca by Antlers.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I was approached by a delivery truck driver when he was, uh, unloading some produce to Something Healthy. He was, uh, kinda making me aware of the fact that he has a forty-eight foot trailer on his, I think he delivers to the antlers as well. Got a big, like, beard. No, maybe not. Okay. Maybe the curb cews. I don't know. He goes down the alley by the antlers. He just wanted to make me aware that, um, the curb isn't painted yellow there. And there's somebody that parks, like, right tight to the corner on the alley on Seneca in the back of the antlers. So he's worried about flipping the vehicle. So he's wondering if he could get that painted again. And then he's also concerned about the diagonal parking. He's worried that he's gonna hit some of the vehicles when he tries to swing around to go down that alley. And then he said it's not a problem now because if he's concerned about it, he could park in the, uh, in the center lane to unload. But he's worried about it, um, if, for this winter, when we pile snow in the center. Because then, you know, he won't be able to park there and he'll have to try to meet that corner. So those are his concerns about the diagonal parking. I'm only bringing it up because he delivers to some of our constituents that need the goods that he brings. That's all I have to report about that.
Can we paint that corner?
Yeah, we gotta do it, babe.
Okay, well, we'll start with that and see if that resolves as an issue. Um, number two meeting with rural water.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh, we met with a circuit rider, a new circuit rider with, uh, Rural Water. She came to Greg's office at the city shop. Um, and then, uh, the water committee came and met with her as well, minus Councilman Steve Sim because he had to work. It was kind of in the middle of the day. I think it was like ten o'clock in the morning or something like that. So she was just coming to look at some of the plans that we have for, um, infrastructure improvements in the future. And so she wanted to see some of our SRF projects that we might wanna get done in the future. And she, uh, Rural Water, they're, they're technical assistance providers. So, um, we pay for a membership as, as a city for, uh, Rural Water. And they, they provide operator training. And, uh, they also help with, with, uh, grants and, and stuff like that. So it's, uh, it's always good to have, you know, an extra set of hands when we're trying to do infrastructure improvements and work on things like grants. So it was, uh, it was a good meeting. There wasn't, she, it was a preliminary meeting and she's new. So she just compiled a list of information. And then she went back to, to discuss it with some of the people that have been with Rural Water for, uh, you know, a longer period of time. And, uh, yeah, uh, she's, she recovered and it, and it was good. It was good to visit with her.
She was really positive about maybe having some money that we could get to. I told her to bring Sam back.
I asked her some of the, um, the questions that Councilman Steve Sim asked me to ask her about. They have something called, uh, principal forgiveness on the loans. So sometimes you can qualify for principal forgiveness so that you don't have to pay the entire loan part of it is forgiven. So it's basically like a grant. And then the, their low interest loans, they're usually around, uh, two and a half percent. But since all this inflation stuff has been hitting, um, sometimes they can adjust that rate. So it's easier to pay back like a twenty or thirty, or thirty-year loan. But, um, there, there isn't any principal forgiveness available at the state level right now. So sometimes you just hold off and wait until there is principal forgiveness before you go to apply. That's all I have to report about that.
Number three, parking ordinances.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, uh, I was approached by our, uh, community service officer, um, last week. Uh, she wanted us to revisit some of the parking ordinances because, uh, she was having a hard time. She said she didn't like to enforce some of the ordinances because it didn't seem fair. Uh, because there's some, some of our streets that have no on-street parking. And then some of the neighbors were calling people in and she felt bad about having to issue citations. But she since resigned. But, uh, will, uh, the parking ordinances that we have on the books right now haven't been revisited since, uh, eighty-eight. So it might be a good idea for the streets committee to get together, um, you know, so that we can look at some of these ordinances, see which ones are relevant anymore.
I didn't like the RV one that was recently instated. You said eighty-eight?
Uh, what's that?
You said it was quite a while in the past, that the RV one has been instated.
Yeah, that's, since we were, since I've been on council.
One ordinance that got here in town, like not feeding animals, I'd like to bring up. I talked to that gal, the ordinance officer. I've had, I've had two neighbors up around the corner that feed turkeys, deer. And, uh, I talked to her about going talking to them. And I know she didn't because they keep, I've seen them out there filling the feeders and the turkeys and deer are still going there. And I mean, well, that's why we have a problem in town here. It, you know, it isn't the animals' fault. You're gonna feed them, they're gonna come here, you know? And that's why we have so many deer and turkeys. I ain't kidding you. I've lived, I've lived up at a cemetery for twenty-three years. And I used to see turkeys once a year. And I mean, there was like a dozen of them that came. And I mean, they literally came up the alley by the armory, went down the street, up around the corner. They never went in anybody's lawn. Now, they're here eight months out of the year, solid. I mean, it's ridiculous. And it's just because those people have fed them. But I told her to go talk, I mean, I don't wanna see anybody get in trouble either, but go talk to them, give them a warning to stop feeding them, you know? But I don't think she ever did because they never quit doing it. And, you know, if they don't listen, I guess they need to fine, you know? But I mean, that's why we have the problem, problem in town here with the turkeys and the deer. I mean, God, you can't drive out to the grade school without getting a damn turkey sometimes. I mean, I mean, the same thing there. We've created that problem. And I mean, we have, we have ordinances against that, but we don't enforce them. And that's why, you know, I never came down here when you guys got the chickens, but it's the same thing there. You're, you're gonna have people that don't, don't adhere to the rules and, and aren't gonna follow them and you aren't gonna enforce it. It's same with mowing. The city itself don't mow. There, there's a, there's a lot between me and the armory. Greg mows it once a summer. It's ridiculous. It, it was waist-high before he mowed it. I mean, let's, let's do what we're supposed to do, you know? I, I think, get away, I couldn't leave my yard, go like that. I'd get, I'm sure I'd get a ticket.
Now she quit.
Your wife will be mad.
Well, that too, yeah. That's the worst part of it, but, uh, yeah. We have got a warning on our yard, and it wasn't even our yard.
I got a notice in the mail once. And they said that they were going to find me because it wasn't done. So I asked the gal to come and look at my yard and tell me what was wrong with it. When she got there, she said, well, this isn't the problem. It's over there. I said, well, do you think you could get the right address? And I said, do you think maybe somebody should send an apology for what they sent me?
Well, that engineer you had here, he, he thought it was my liability to mow that lot, the city lot over there. I mowed it for fifteen years for free. Then I told him I, I offered to buy it, didn't wanna sell it, so. I said, I at least want a hundred dollars at least to pay for my gas. I didn't wanna do that. So I'm like, I'm done with it. You know, but now they mow it like once a year just to be hungry, I guess. It's like, you know, it isn't my fault. Engineer, he, he was, he actually told me he's gonna go talk to his lawyer because he thought I was entitled to mow that. I just laughed. I'm like, will you let me know how that goes? That's when I was done mowing it. I mean, that's why I quit mowing it. The guy was an idiot.
Would you like to start again, please? We'll let, we'll let you mow for free now.
Yeah, it's too late, but the gas is going up too much. Joe, Joe, yeah. I like some of the streets, like up there frontier, they should ride the bottom of Donick Street. You gotta pull clear out of the street to see up the street because they got vines growing in their fence.
It really does obstruct the vision to see around that. You've got to kind of skirt out to look.
I'm about to get up at the top of Rudy, who just started coming to the council meeting because of that pickup trailer sits right around the corner because of the blind spot.
Yeah.
At the top, at the top of your guys' street.
Right now, they can have trailers down the street until end of September.
End of September.
They constantly keep that trailer. I probably about got hit that corner four or five times already.
Yeah, and right down the bottom of the street, that fence right there has got all the vines growing on it. And you gotta pull out onto the street to be able to see up the street.
Could we put up one of those mirror kind of things or anywhere near there that you could see?
Hell, that's right there on Stampede Street. Frontier on the Stampede.
Yeah.
You gotta pull out on the Stampede to look to the right, to see if anybody's coming down the street.
I don't have, um, all the facts yet, but I do know that Sergeant Thompson's working on a, a plan for the community service officer. What could we use to look, so that this is gonna be a plan that'll take a little bit to get further protection? But, um, it's something that, um, we were gonna talk about a little bit later. Do you want, do we wanna talk about the platform now?
I can give you some of the ideas for what we're gonna do as far as the community service responsibilities that we have versus what, what we're planning to do in the future. One of my ideas is to actually dissolve that position of a community service officer and task that, uh, those duties to the actual certified police officers. That, that does several things for us. One of my major concerns about having a community service officer is they are a civilian employee. They're not certified. They don't go through the academy. They don't have the training. We can't equip them with the proper safety equipment. Where in this day and age, you don't know that if you issue somebody a citation for some hornets violation, they could quite well pull out the handle and, and use force against you, uh, up to and including a deadly degree. So I don't like the idea of like using a civilian employee in that capacity. So I want to task that job with certified personnel. That's, so that's the start of the plan. But I want to either assign certain trouble ordinances, you know, say weeds and grass or trash or just to give an example to one officer and say, this is your job. Or I also thought about giving, dividing the city into zones and saying, okay, officer, whomever, this is your zone. Please make sure that people are in compliance with the city ordinances, taking into account any complaints we've received. You know, and, and some of those ordinances are kind of seasonal. Weeds and grass is obviously a summertime issue. Shovel on your sidewalks, a wintertime issue. Campers are a summer, or can be a wintertime issue actually because you can't park them on the street during the wintertime of the year. So we. So we, we're considering restructuring that to hopefully provide a little more consistency and a better service. Um, standardizing the way we send out notifications. So you don't get a notification in the mail. I stop by, knock on your door. If you wanna answer that, picks it to your door. Because that door should hopefully pretty clearly correspond to that yard, right? So, um, and just have a standardized notification that says, um, please mow your lawn within a certain amount of time. Or else you'll be issued a citation. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Or please shovel your sidewalk. Um, try to, obviously, our job is not to go out and just hammer people. That's, our job is to bring people in compliance with the law. So we try to do that as, as gently and efficiently as we can. Because we don't want to be more aggressive than we need to be. That's contrary to popular belief. That's how we try to do our job. So those are some of the ideas for, um, how we want to restructure that. Did you have a question?
Well, and speaking of using workforce, you guys go do, um, go through an ethics program, don't you?
That's part of the.
Or do you do like yearly credits towards that or?
That's part of the Law Enforcement Academy is the ethics.
But you don't do continuing education afterwards?
Oh, you, pretty much every continuing education has something, some ethical component of it for the most part.
Making sure.
Any other questions in regards to the parking ordinance?
So how many of these, uh, officers are gonna lose time on the streets picking up speeders that bust up and down the roads?
Well, obviously, that's gonna, that, they will lose some of their time that is dedicated to speed. They will lose some of the time that's dedicated to all sorts of enforcement, but, uh, the problem we're running into right now is we're already shorthanded. Because of the nature of the community service officer position, we were having them serve the citations anyways. So they were kind of doing that. The community service officer would write the citation, but then a certified officer would be able to serve it just for safety reasons and liability reasons. So we're kind of doing it anyways and I think it's just a necessary equal at this point.
Also, um, uh, I know we talked with the highway department. They came in and, and talked with us and uh, we just have to let them know and be able to provide a speed limit flashing sign. Uh, but they did give us permission, um, to place those. We just have to afford to purchase them.
We have to go through their process first. Um, step one was a race or a speed study we just conducted and finished up last week. I'm waiting to get three quarters or something. That way we, we have to have that done before the highway department even entertain. Yeah, I thought about putting up those greater speed signs.
But I don't.
It's in the works.
Yeah, but they said that if all that is considered, it would be passed. They don't usually have it where it's not passed. But one time. So hopefully that would come through to when we're able to get that and it can help. Because sometimes when people see it flashing, they always look to see how fast they're going and so on, so.
I, I've got a quick question. It's a little off the subject, though. We're talking about traffic. Has the study from the DOT come back yet on about traffic through the four-way from August?
I, that I don't know. Um, anyway, I'm not even sure who to talk to. I can, I can probably talk to the district engineer.
So yeah, the group that was here two months ago to give that briefing, she forgot her name, she was, she made, she made sure it was up. Says it would kind of traffic behind the sun. Okay, I just wanted to.
That's Michelle Edwards, uh, one of the white outs engineers. I don't know if you can contact her to see. And it, it takes a little while for it to compile the information too.
I know.
And also new speed radar signs we're putting up, um, actually a data logging capability. It doesn't record license plate, doesn't take your picture. It logs the time, time date and the speed of every vehicle going past. So we can actually do speed studies with this system if we're lucky. And it's two, three thousand dollars cheaper than the one that's currently at the grade school that is working.
They got that shut off.
It mightn't get burned up. Well, to replace that unit itself was gonna be nine thousand dollars. We found this other unit comparable price needs DOT requirements for forty-two hundred. Plus one of looking at actually the data logging capabilities and actually look at what speed people are driving.
Good stopping.
I have a question for Sergeant Thompson. How, how long do you think it's gonna take you to reevaluate the duties of the police officers for the CSO position? Cause I was, I was prepared to make a suggestion to the council that, that we get an ad in the paper for the CSO position. Cause I don't want this to turn into another deal where we're three, four months down the road and we haven't filled that position. Um, cause we kind of need to have our community service officer out there enforcing ordinances.
We have another, uh, police commission meeting next week. We're probably going to discuss that a little bit more at that time, but I, um, if that is in fact the route we're deciding to not fill that position, it's, um, I'm going to have a meeting with the staff and, and discuss with them, you know, at least give their opinions on the, what they think would be the best way to implement, um, the ordinance enforcement to them would be. And so I, I would say within, within a couple of weeks, we'll have a solution or we'll have a plan in place as to how to proceed forward with this.
Can we get quiet on the next agenda to see what we have?
Thank you.
Um, if there's no other questions on the parking ordinance, I'll move on to number four, joint power board. Did you want to elaborate?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the joint power board selection committee met, um, in the last, uh, couple of weeks um, to select the two members at large for the joint power board. That committee reviewed several applications, did some interviews on Friday and then Saturday, some Monday. And we ended up picking James Kern and Austin Baker out of the group as the members of large to serve on that board.
How many applicants?
Um, I believe there were six.
And if that makes any difference for the rest of the, for the rest of the.
Um, that is gonna be up to the board now to move forward once the, these two, um, at large members have been selected. It's gonna move, um, pretty quickly. Um, they're gonna have quite a few meetings right away, you know, trying to get their board in some of their, all those procedures put into place for the state. I've heard that the state had kind of approved the joint power board piece up, but I haven't heard any other, um, what their meeting channels are gonna be like. Where, where do they meet? Um, I'm not aware of anything where they decided to have a meeting.
Well, I think we need to, um, with the chief out, uh, we need to designate Sergeant Thompson and make use of order um, to take this place.
Yeah, as part of the discussion, I want the police committee, um, today. Obviously, we're having another meeting to discuss some other matters that we discussed today, next Monday. But that was one of the items we talked about with the chief being out. Trying to make sure we've still got that connection in the joint power board of the police department. And then suggesting that we have, uh, Sergeant Thompson being that voice in that joint power board as we move forward. Do we need to have a motion?
Are you up for it?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
I'm hoping to appoint Sergeant Thompson as our representative to the joint power board.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion. Second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of those, same side?
That's all I have on the joint power selection committee.
Any questions for, for Sergeant Thompson? Um, moving on to number five, Park Pacific. Um, I met with, uh, them this morning. Um, it's kind of exciting. They, um, Park Pacific has a thing in place to where, um, they can do community projects and they have fifty thousand dollars, uh, for this year. And then they have fifty thousand for next year. Um, so we need to, um, they would like to do something in the community. And, uh, we went over a lot of ideas, um, of things that can be brought to the community. Uh, but I'd like to hear from the council, um, of some of their ideas, um, for this project. Uh, we do need to let them know as soon as possible for the first fifty, because that has to be submitted by the thirty-first. And then, um, they can combine that fifty with the fifty for next year towards that.
Aye.
So, um, some of the ideas they had were, um, one simple thing was to place maybe two, um, uh, bike repair stations on the bypass. One maybe by the, um, uh, port of entry and the other by eighty-five and sixteen. Um, so if somebody has an issue, they can repair they like when they're out. Um, another thing that they brought up was, um, they have land that is at the corner of Stampede and the bypass. Um, that it sits closest to the street, which is by, um, the children's center. Um, and there is some stuff that they have to look into, um, that they were thinking of a dog park. Because they've seen it quite a bit throughout, um, social media and, um, the one that maybe, maybe that was gonna put it by, um, Stampede, she bought that property and was gonna put a dog park in between those houses.
We're off the desk.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so they did bring that up. Um, I told them that I would bring that to the council. Um, some other ideas, um, were possibly, um, the skate park to update and redo the skate park. Um, fencing around, um, or not fencing, I'm sorry. I'm getting great stuff mixed up in some of this stuff. So it was the dog park. It was, um, sorry, I shouldn't have this open in that case. Uh, the, maybe some playground equipment at that Ruby, new playground equipment at Ruby Park. Um, fencing around the soccer fields, um, uh, maybe new playground equipment at Centennial Park unless we decide to make that a foundation for the homes. Um, and so that was some of their ideas. Uh, we also talked about, um, the veteran memorial at the cemetery. So if we can come up with something to at least let them know, um, that first fifty can go towards, towards that project. And then the next fifty can go towards finishing that project.
How many acres do they have over there by, would they set for a dog park?
I saw a picture of it, um, but I honestly couldn't tell you. Well, they own all of that, um, by the children's center. Not the children's center, but in front of it, um, or on the side of it, all the way to their training facility and behind there.
That's a good chunk. Need a big doe.
I mean, since I've gone on the council matter, I heard we've been approached by, um, the Ben's Rocket Bike Club about a pump track. So.
Good idea.
I mean, I think that this community is hurting for things for kids to do. So the pump track would be one of my suggestions to add to the list.
I do like that idea. That's a great one.
And then, uh, we also went, uh, or talked to the Newcastle Ice.
Association.
Association.
We did bring that up.
Okay, yeah, I, I mean, I think that fifty thousand dollars would go a long ways towards getting them a, a permanent structure put in somewhere in town.
We talked about a, um, kind of like a four season, kind of like what we have. Um, where they can skate in the summertime and ice skate in the wintertime. Um, so that was one of the other things we did talk about.
I think it's great that Park Pacific has money available for the community so we can do projects like this.
Thank you all.
So do we get that automatically? I mean, is it, we just have to come up with the?
We have to, we have to, um, let them know the project.
And then they have to approve it.
And then, well, um, what was really nice about this, it was at their discretion. Um, Park Pacific said it was at, um, this local facility's discretion on how it's used, but it has to be for, and it may be property. So if any of you guys have ideas for all of us as well. Um, but, um, looking at what we have already, um, obviously updates and repairs can be made. And then I, I do remember that Ben's Rockets and that was a pretty cool thing because they could do bikes, they could do skateboards, they could do all types of stuff, so.
Another thing, Madam Mayor, that, um, the, uh, I mean, we had the Heritage Park project and I've had some constituents come to me with.
I hope that this will help, uh, do with them.
No, not even close. The, 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 it's very expensive project. But one of the components was a splash pad. And, uh, some of my constituents have mentioned that, you know, we don't have to build another park. Maybe we can improve one that's already in existence. So maybe a small splash pad or something for the kids would be another idea.
Or they said, and mentioned the veterans too, so.
I think that's important as well.
Well, this would be the veteran memorial at the cemetery, not the one over in the pinnacle. Cause we also have, um, another local business that, um, already called and talked with, um, Free and myself in regards to wanting to donate, um, a flag and a flagpole. So, um, yeah.
I don't know where they stand. Has anybody talked to them? Or they didn't go ahead with, I mean, something?
I do think that, um, last I spoke with dude was that they were gonna move forward, um, and.
On something.
Right, and they, um, but they didn't like the fact that there was gonna be a splash pad near, um, the veteran park. Cause, uh, taking away the, the signs.
Right.
But with, with everything, um, and your cost, I think the splash pad would be super expensive. So you could, I mean, there is one at Dell Park. I don't know if that's even usable. Isn't it just there? Wasn't there?
The waiting pool.
There was a waiting pool.
Oh, waiting, but that's not.
A waiting pool.
But see, they stopped doing that because wasn't people like hating in it?
There were several things wrong with this, um, one minute and the other.
Yeah.
So.
Speaking of.
Yeah, it drains by itself.
Those are, um, ideas. Um, what, I mean, what does the council think would be the best one to look at? Ben's Rockets? Or fixing one of the parks that you have currently? Um, cause.
So do we have ground for Ben's Rockets? Do they have?
They have several locations, but they have, and then one of them is city-owned. Um, and that's why they were approaching us. And then some of them are outside of property. One was in the county over by the feder ground. So I mean.
A lot of money to.
It would have to stay over the city.
Do we have to use all that money for one project?
No.
Oh.
That's why I said like these, these bike stations are only like.
To fix a bike. Now, I wouldn't be able to fix a bike. What the heck is that?
Well, I, it's a bike station. It's anywhere from a thousand to two thousand, I don't know. It was, somebody brought it, um, to the committee that I was speaking with at Park Pacific and said this would be a good idea because they must be on the bike.
You hand your bike up on it?
No, it's kind of like if you have a flat tire or that kind of stuff. Uh, it's got, I just worry that somebody's gonna walk up to some of the people that are on it. Um, but, um, so.
I think that Ben's Rockets has been.
Yeah, they.
Before the councils, multiple occasions, um, they do something really positive in the community. Um, you know, uh, I think it's good for the kids to be out and active. Um, they sponsor events around our community, like, uh, the, the fun, the caveman fun run, the flying bee trails, like they're really active in our community. I think that.
Well, and a lot of, um, Caleb, he does a lot of work on the tires and so does that whole group.
A pump track could bring competitions and bring people, if, if fifty thousand dollars might be just the right amount to spend and get a good one.
Well, we can, I can talk, um, get in touch with Caleb tomorrow and see where they're at and then, um, go to Park Pacific and let them know or, but what's our number two, just in case?
I also think ICE Association.
Well, if I may, we got a part of, uh, Robin Park playground equipment for, you know, twenty years.
Oh, replace some of the playground.
This, we have playground equipment there, they, somebody donated a bunch of used playground equipment. It was on the same, so we had to pull it out. We've been asking for Ruby Park playground equipment that's on the same.
Is there any ideas, um, you guys?
Yeah.
I mean, we had a really good turnout for this meeting.
Yeah, might as well.
We talked about water, we talked about the park.
Yeah, probably not a splash pad.
No.
Yeah, I guess one that would be that'd make most sense for, uh, you know, long-term economics for maintenance. You know, so it's not real taxing on the community to maintain it, whatever it's meant to be. I mean, the bike would be great for kids.
I think they were saying like kids could even get up, like what they had planned was even kids can get on the vehicles. So it's, it would be friendly for all.
Striders or whatever.
And, um, so I'm, I'm glad you remembered that because I thought that's pretty cool.
Yeah, nice.
So, um, but I'll give Caleb the call tomorrow. Um, but it would probably have to be on the same property we talked about. Is that still an option?
That's a really good one, we're gonna have a facility over off of, we're gonna have an option. You wanted what over there? New, new facility, new storage facility. Store what? Our public works equipped. No. We ran out of space where we're at. We, we looked at a master plan for our facility. Well, still looking at what we can and can't do, what, what to do at Dog Park. Probably talk to Jeremy, you can see where he's at, right? That would actually look better, better flyer spot. Have your space.
The, the guy was a workout, they're talking about him.
Jeremy.
He came to.
He's, he's, he's one really.
Yeah, he was.
Yeah, he's, he's the president.
I guess.
I get you some of that.
Okay, thank you, great.
If we're going for like a top three, Madam Mayor, I mean, we just asked the ordinance, um, for no dogs at the ball fields. And people were looking for places where they can go and exercise their dogs. And, uh, I know that some people are tired of them, um, getting on in the semiquetry, um, and other places like that. So having a designated spot for people to go run their dogs might be, uh, um, you know, a positive thing for the community. Um, I was just down in Douglas last weekend and, uh, they had a really nice dog park and, and it gets used a lot. Um, but they're about double our population, I think, but.
I, I think it would be. Um. Well, and, uh, for that, um, dog park, um, it is something that he said he would have to recheck in now at the Park Pacific on the right location. Um, so we would have to set how the second location, um, still, is that still available? So we, or is that?
Rodeo, um, yeah, sort of, we got to do a bunch here.
But we do have a second location, okay, cool, okay. All right, well, I will bring those three, um, to, uh, the Park Pacific, um, but I'm gonna talk to Ken's Rockets first, um, before I do. Um, moving on to number six, Newcastle Ambulance Service. Um, I, uh, got their email and their email seemed, um, way different than the numbers we've been reading, um, and are repeating. Um, so I got some information and, um, and talked with Chris. Uh, Jason wasn't available at the time that I called, so I talked with Chris. Uh, he tried to explain the numbers, um, in their email. Um, some of them are double, so like their O O T T, um.
Are transferred.
Yeah, so they have the eight there, but then they also include that eight in the patient transfers. So, um, that's why their numbers are so high. So to figure out how they do their process, um, through the state, um, since they're getting their numbers through the state from the, um, the, um, information that they have to provide, um, and how dispatch, um, does the information, um, in the system. So we're gonna get together on, okay, I think it was the eighteenth because we have a meeting that night. Um, we're gonna get together and go through all of them. Um, I asked them how, uh, things were going with funding more, um, or advertising for more health. Uh, they said they did have a, um, like a luncheon thing over at Isabella's and they had zero way to show up. Um, uh, they have advertised social media, um, they did advertise in our paper. Um, they, um, are using G E O, which is kind of like something on Google that kind of sends out if somebody was to Google something, it goes out a certain, um, radius of our town. Um, they, um, they, um, do have one Newcastle person in classes right now, so that's a positive. But, uh, other than that, um, there's not much else that he was able, um, to do. They do have interviews on the twenty-first, but I did not find out if that had anything to do with, um, what's going on. Um. So, um, hopefully the meeting that we have on the eighteenth, um, we can clarify some more of that. So if you have any concerns or comments or anything that wants to be brought to them, um, we can do that. But that's where they're at.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
But I just wanted to give you that small little thing. Um, any old business? Okay, department heads, uh, city attorney doubling hands.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so first off, we have the ordinance number seven, series twenty-three. See, last time that we tabled this, we were trying, or we were going to look into what those values would be underneath the actual chart. Did we actually end up getting those by chance?
No, what was that again?
Oh, I'm sorry. So we had, uh, basically for the, the trash increase, the garbage increases and everything else. Um, we had tabled this, I believe it was at the last meeting, if I'm correct. Um, and I believe the landfill committee or, um, I think it would be the landfill committee.
Sanitation.
Sanitation committee was going to look into what values would be, need to be put, um, basically for each additional three hundred gallon capacity, in excess of eight. Do you recall that?
Yeah, uh, we did, we did need, so.
Well, I will send out an email tomorrow to just try to, you know, touch base. I probably should have been pushing on that because it would have been something that slipped.
Yeah, Dan, my apologies.
Um, I have one other thing regarding, uh, the contracts that we were just talking about with, um, the underwater and sewer committees. And this is more of a logistics question than anything. Would it be better for everybody in that committee if we had a meeting to address those contracts? Or would you guys rather like to send me a report via email and then I redraft them, basically?
Well, actually, I was gonna request for water sewer committee meeting to go over next week, Fridays, missed three years' time. And basically present the committee first, let you guys see what's going on. So we could have, we could add that into the committee meeting as well.
We did, um, the clerk's office did send letters out with that billing and have the rates, um, reflecting of the percentages that would be enclosed, so I will pass that on too.
Thank you, Stacy. Um, I think that is everything, Madam Mayor.
Um, can we address the contract or can we have something else? Um, and, uh, please, uh.
Well, if, if we're gonna move forward with creating a contract, we can. Um, I think that would be a question for the council. I guess, I guess the question would be then, I mean, we, we are tentatively in a relationship with, um, Newcastle Ambulance Service, but, um, the issue, I, I understand that we're getting updates and everything else. But does the council basically want to move forward with having some sort of contract in place? Uh, especially seeing that we basically are still paying this entity as of right now.
I think we need some type of written contract with the agency to kind of go with what these type of money that we're providing this agency for our community.
So we're gonna pinpoint stuff that we want done and if they don't do it, what?
Well, we're giving them a hundred thousand dollars.
I'm just asking.
I do wanna let the council know that our service providers each year after budget time, we send them vouchers to sign and send back and request their agreement. It's not really a contract. I have not received anything back from Newcastle Ambulance. We have not actually paid them since July. Cause I haven't received a voucher back. I did email Chris Belts this last week notifying him that I didn't receive anything and I haven't received an email back either.
When, how long ago?
I sent the email last week.
Wow.
I didn't know if he, maybe he was on vacation.
Well, I just talked to him today and he didn't, he didn't say anything. I just think we need some kind of guideline for that money. I mean, it should be, no matter the amount of it, um, we should be able to answer questions to our community and our citizens on what, what those ones are allocated to and what.
Did we have a, uh, M O U or some kind of contract with Newcastle Ambulance when it was under Roger Teske?
It was more of a letter of understanding that was signed. But, uh, they kept referring to a contract. And the contract they were referring to was through the commissioners.
I remember, well, I remember commissioners.
But I think we have to have something, like a D N U or a contract of funds.
I think when we have issues that we had in several months ago, of no service here and having nine-one-one calls and not having a service here and then trying to backfill, um, you know, the, the whole purpose of this is paying for a service for the community. And then when we're not getting that service for the people, for the community, you know, how do we get them to answer for that?
I understand that.
Taking people to rep, but they don't, they don't do it at all. And to me, I think they, they just need to have some, some way of answering to the money that we're spending. And it's a pretty good chunk of change that we're spending for this service. And if they don't have any, any way of answering back to us and we have community members asking us questions like, well, we have nothing in contract with them that says they have to do certain service. They got an ambulance here? Yep, gonna take four to five minutes for them to, to backfill for an ambulance to be here. In the meantime, we have a nine-one-one call that we have no backup for.
And they're taking, I mean, it's a, it's not a Newcastle city business. So, um, they're able to run their business the way they wanna run it.
Well, it's Campbell County, isn't it?
Mm-hmm, but it's not, um, you know, um, there was a couple of things that was brought to my attention. Um, and that's why I, when I got his email, I did a little research. Um, you know, they, when I talked to Chris today, he said that, um, you know, they were at the Enduro race over the weekend. Um, and they had an ambulance there and we had an ambulance in town. Well, something happened and the ambulance there needed to take care of an individual. So they called for the second ambulance to go all the way to Upton and stand by. So we were, um, Newcastle was without an ambulance. Um, and then there was another time that they didn't have a backup ambulance and this wasn't that long ago. And, um, a citizen drove themselves to the hospital with three injuries.
My dad suffered from the, the backfilling to, when he, uh, had to stay for an extended period of time at the emergency department at the hospital because there was no backfill of amb, they were waiting on the, the backup ambulance to come from right. Um, you know, I think, I think that we have to tread carefully because if they decide to pull up stakes, then we got nothing. I mean, you know, having a discussion with them, you know, a letter, something that, that says that we would appreciate it if we had certain things, but, um, we need to have a plan in place in case they decide to leave our community because they don't like the terms of said letter or terms of said, uh, M O U or contract.
That's what I'm afraid of.
I know, I'll check with the commissioners tomorrow and, um, I'll send an email in regards to that district.
Yes, that, that. Yes, that, that's the thing we need to pursue.
And since there is a new, um, I don't know what Dr. Judd is at the hospital, what's his position, the CEO over there?
Is he a doctor?
Yeah. He, maybe you could talk to him too in regards to having something available.
I mean, I think that.
I understand the short step.
Having another idea of what we're gonna do is important for our community. Because if they pull up stakes, then we have nothing. And having, you know, service that maybe we think is a little bit lacking is better than having no service at all.
I agree.
Right now, we have football season in full swing. And they're gonna have to be down there for the games. Then what, who are they gonna use for backup?
Well, you said that they have a standby contract. Um, and in that standby contract, if they have to leave for, um, a certain, um, emergency, that's something that they would have to leave, that the, they would have to stop their sporting event until they can return.
Geez, no kidding.
That's what you told them today. But the, with the Enduro race, um, they signed a contract with that, um, entity. And they were paid by that entity, uh, a hundred and five dollars an hour to be at the Enduro. So they're still taking on other contracts and standbys and things like that and maybe our city empty.
So they, they had, they're getting a hundred and five dollars an hour for the ambulance that could have been here for our, oh.
An hour, an hour, a hundred and five an hour is what he said.
I got you, I got you.
Um, but these are some things that, um, we are gonna be going over on the, so, um, I would suggest, um, uh, email all your questions that we can take to them, um, on that day.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay. Um, moving on to city clerk treasurer, Stacy Harry.
Thank you. Um, my first item is on the Motorola invoice for the two hundred and eighty-four thousand nine twenty-one that, um, you would have received. I gave you a copy of that last meeting. Um, I did hear back from Motorola, they would accept a payment arrangement of half of that to be paid, um, by September thirtieth into this fiscal year. And the other half, they would allow us to pay by July thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. So we could have half of it within next fiscal year.
Wonderful job, thank you.
And I did talk to, um, Sergeant Thompson a little bit, and we thought that maybe those numbers would still work for this fiscal year.
Um, I wasn't at the last meeting, so was there an option to trade on that or do we need to?
Well, we wanted to look and see where options work. Well, I, I move that we move on Stacy's office and share her opinion now on that real estate.
Hi, second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay.
My second item is with the increased utility rates. Um, I wanted the council to consider, we currently require a hundred dollar deposit for all water customers. Um, any customers falling into our delinquents, delinquency, um, forty-five days or more past due currently required to pay an additional hundred dollars. With the increased rates, we do have several, um, customers that fall into a higher water usage where even that two hundred dollar, uh, deposit is not gonna cover water bills if they chose to walk out on their bill. Um, so I didn't know if the council would like to revisit the ordinances reflecting that hundred dollar deposit and maybe increase to, um, a hundred and fifty for each initial and then additional for delinquencies?
Uh, myself, I would like to kind of see how this, you know, play out with the, with the water rates and then kind of get an idea of what you would have maybe as returning or, I guess, for number to see what those would come to before I would automatically say, let's raise that.
Sure.
I don't want to raise anything else.
Yeah, no, and I, and I do agree, I just did one of me, yeah.
People are gonna be in their rears right away. Obviously, they're gonna be mad over an additional bill. But I just don't want to throw another piece in there saying, okay, if you're gonna not pay your bill within that four to five days, we're gonna add another two hundred, two hundred fifty dollar fee to that.
I just wanted to, like, send the council.
Kind of plays out first, we get the numbers, you know, with the delinqu, delinquencies.
No, I wouldn't put it on the next agenda, it would be on the agenda.
Give us some time.
Revisit in six months or so. Cause we do currently, like, this last round, and this was from August, we have thirty-two customers that are on our delinquency report. And that's pretty average for each month. Um, of that, about six of them are over the two hundred and fifty dollar amount that would be due. So, um, but yes, definitely, we can revisit.
Started number right there, you have thirty-two. Does that increase in the next four or five months? Do we ever give these people an option to, to pay us in, in increments?
We have, we, um, I will tell you, today was a very, very busy day for our office. Um, which handled very, very well by the clerks. Um, and we do, we, we told everybody that we did call, that we would try to work with them to the best of our ability over the next couple of months. And then, of course, we did tell the few that if they needed to reach out, reach out to Leap or a funding agency, we tried to help with that as well.
There's also another organization in the state, and I could provide you some more information. Y O helped, helps with, uh, yeah. You already have that.
We have some of the pamphlets in the office, or we did last year, so I'll make sure we have some of those too. And then my last item was the public officer training, which I did send you guys a little bit of information on that. Um, the training was, um, there, it was good, definitely knowledgeable of some things that, um, we didn't implement, which was the payroll and the bank reconciliations that you guys received. Um, but given that, they do require it for, um, all of the council by July of twenty twenty-four. I did give you guys the copy of some of those trainings, um, with the links that you, in the email, you'll have access to the links. I didn't know if any of you would, um, prefer that I try to contact any of those agencies and do a group, um, training? Or if you would prefer to just, um, follow up on that on your own?
We should have like a big thing here and do it all together.
How long are these, Stacy?
Um, the one I attended through the Department of Audit was from nine o'clock until three-thirty with an hour and a half break, so.
I think we should do it together.
Well, it's gonna be kind of hard with, there's several.
I mean, I guess if we did, if a classroom setting, a little kid could attend, could attend. And then they have the links to the, to where they need to go if they have to do around their own time.
I'll, I'll check and do it and let you guys know if I know.
Okay.
That's all I have. Any questions for city clerk?
What are they gonna train us to do?
Just be a public officer, Tom.
I thought maybe that's gonna get a new vocation or something.
Thank you, my son.
You do, you will get a certificate.
Roll over, play dead.
All right, um, public work supervisor, Greg Scott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, my first item is, we, we kind of had to make a quick decision. We had to send a letter by September first to, on the Water Development Commission. Either requesting an amendment to our original request for the pump station project or go, go through legislation and try and get even more money. Legislation, we wouldn't be able to go to bid with pump station project, reinbidding the pump station project in March. Looking at the amount of money we would get by going through legislation, I didn't think it was worth the effort. So we decided to, um, move forward with requesting a fifteen percent increase to our original budget for the pump station project, which engineers estimate, estimate now is four hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. We'll get, with this, we'll get an additional seventeen thousand, eighty-five dollars in grant funding.
So would you repeat that, what, what grant?
Uh, this is for the pump station.
No, no, I got that, but how much is it going to be?
Seventeen thousand, eighty-five dollars.
That's what we gotta pay?
Oh, no, what we, what we'll have to pay? Hundred, cause what the grand total of the grant would be, would be a hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. After the increase.
Okay. Thank you.
And the rest will be, uh, S R F funds. And what we're requesting, I guess, right now is, uh, we have to have a resolution signed in order to request this funding, so.
Can you do a different thing?
To do what?
The resolution.
Oh, yeah, no, okay.
She would be number five, number five. The resolution number five, series two thousand twenty-three. Resolution to authorizing submission of a request to the Wyoming Water Development Commission for an increase to funding for the Newcastle Water System Improvement two thousand twenty project. Whereas the city of Newcastle desires to complete the city of Newcastle Pump Station Improvements twenty twenty project, which is receiving funding from the Wyoming Water Development Commission. Whereas due to an increase in the engineer, uh, estimate due to equipment cost increases, additional funding is necessary. Whereas the city of Newcastle, Newcastle will be requesting an increase in funding from the Wyoming Water Development Commission in the amount of seventeen thousand, eighty-five, making a total grant amount of a hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five.
What's the resolution number, Adam?
Uh, five.
Five. I move that we approve resolution number five, series twenty twenty-three.
Wait a second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, so now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Newcastle, Wyoming. The request to the WWDC for additional funding be approved and accepted this fifth day of September two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Campbell. Trying to get there every time, I forget it. Item number two is the, that landfill number two. Currently, we have a drainage going right through the middle of the landfill. We're wanting to redirect that drainage around the landfill permanently. With our new pit, all the water wants to run into the new pit. We paid, we dug actually two holding ponds on site where we could find a place to do it. And we have to, we paid, uh, hurricane services to remove the water as well, well, three thousand dollar bill for it.
That was the backdrop there, if you saw them, okay.
Yeah, that's what that was for, is to remove the water out of the pit. We have a plan to redirect the drainage permanently, which will add, add and improve the landfill two culture project. Um, we, we found out the landowner would like three thousand dollars an acre for the easement. We have one point eight acres, so it'd be fifty-four hundred dollars if you pay them for the easement.
This is gonna assist with, uh, remediation of the landfill?
Uh, no, just the, just the closure, landfill two. That'd keep us from having our garbage marched to the far end of the pit.
And losing equipment all the way up to the axle?
Yeah, yeah, it was that. We had a length that was probably two and a half, three feet deep. That would have been a big sucker.
It gets bad out there. I move that we move forward with landfill number two easement.
Second, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion?
It sounds like it's necessary so that we can continue to operate the landfill and help we're able to close it and then have our garbage redirected to the, probably.
So that motion includes the fifty-four hundred dollar payment to the landowner? Is what we're doing? Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Okay. My next item is, uh, I got the land, the land sale proposals, the alter proposals. We only received one, uh, from Team Properties.
From who?
Team Properties. Should be in your back end. Spoke with interim engineer Bartlett, everything seems to be in order, so. Should need to make a decision if that's the route we want to go or something. My recommendation is to let them try and sell.
So they're, yeah, they're the only ones that got that? Why?
You know, it's getting that way of everything. I mean, our, our loader bin.
Holy moly.
Our loader bin, we sent it up to five companies, we got one bid.
Geez.
Uh, the asphalt project, pre, uh, pre-bid meeting, we had one contract.
I move that we, uh, move forward with using Team Properties Group LLC as our reorders to move said properties.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion?
If they're the only reorder that's funded, then it kind of leaves us with our only choice.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right.
Next item, if you remember right, the streeter came in and wanted to see what we could do about the drainage across Dole Avenue. Dole Avenue is an unapproved section of street. In behind the, uh, house drive. Highway Department has a drainage that comes up and stops right next to their house. That's a good picture. It just daylights out into the, out into, on the edge of the property. That water is about two foot deep, right there. This drainage never quits running. It runs here and there. It's coming from Washington Park area over there with a drain tile going through Washington Park plus all these storm sewers. And all that water flows down here right next to their house. What we, with interim engineer and I looked at was to extend the cover across the city's unapproved driveway and then try and ditch it out on their property if that's what they wish and just get the water to spread out. I'll tell you, it was a mosquito-infested place. We don't have tablets, we had tablets up above this, but not here.
Now, this is behind?
Now, this is behind, how do you do?
Yep.
So, this isn't like Kelly Taylor problem? This is, they're two different areas.
It's on the other side of the drain, the wetlands.
The twins that were in.
Right next to, uh, one between, the, 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 the electric. Twenty-one electrics off to the way out in the east end, they turn to the right, west and then. Looking at it, the pipe would cost fifty-seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and that's to put per gate HDB. Manhole, I cannot get them calling back with the price, but we're estimating six to eight thousand. Purpose for the manhole is this pipe come, you notice on the drawing on the second page, the existing pipe comes in real tight. We're gonna drop it down, change pipe type, and then ditch it out there, or pipe it out there.
What, I don't, okay, up, up at that place where you have all that stuff stacked around, is there a bunch of concrete manholes up there?
Yep, and they're all pour stuff.
They're all what?
They're all, they're all, they're all pouring. Don't take my pipe, don't take my manhole, there's places for it.
Well, I just thought you had them sitting there, we might as well use them.
This manhole also has to be larger than normal. It's not gonna be a four foot wide manhole, it's gotta be larger because of the, to accommodate the bigger pipe. You have five foot on the inside, not four foot. And that's to accommodate the twenty-four inch RCP coming in one side and the total of twenty-four inch HDB going out the other side. I guess I would like to know the council's pleasure if you want us to continue on with this project or what you'd like to do.
Is this a project that you guys are gonna be able to do?
We would probably, yeah, we would try and do it this fall. If not, talking to contractors, I thought it was way out of range, but they're talking thirty to forty thousand dollars for a hundred and fifty feet of pipe, so we'll do it ourselves.
So, we had some folks come in and identify a need. Wasn't there something about whether it's a road that we maintain or if it's their driveway?
Right now, it's their driveway. We don't, we did not build the road. It's only about ten feet wide, ten, twelve feet wide is all, and it's a pathway to their house. We've, I've never been given the direction or I don't believe previous engineer did either to build the road. Cause we built the road, he'd have to move his shed, cause we'd have to tie it back, we tied it back into that bite avenue. And looking at the right way, that's running right where his shed is.
So, this is actually located on his property, the drainage, or that is part of the easement?
That, we didn't, we didn't find it. We don't know if it's an easement or not for drainage easement for it. Didn't have time to research that part of it. We can look into the, whether it has a drainage easement across its property or not.
If, I mean, I hate to say it, but if it's, if it's located on private property or it's not in an easement, then I don't think that the city should have to incur that cost to, to fix it. If it is in our easement, I mean, he wasn't agreeable to having to move his shed if we were to make it part of the public way, so.
Yeah, not, that part I don't know, but I'm looking at the Google for the layout of it, that's.
What happens if we do nothing?
They have water in their yard.
Well, can they irrigate and grow crops?
Well, I think they can, as much water flows through there. It was run pretty good, there was no storms for.
I suggest we buy them six, seven packs of tomato seeds.
So, this is the proposal line, uh?
Yes. Solid black line, it's an actual pipe.
That he put in.
Yes.
So, it's, it's discharging here?
Yeah.
Right.
And this is drainage off of the state highway then, right?
Yep.
So.
Can it be state highways?
Well, guess what? With that agreement we have with them, we take care of the stormwater as well, sidewalks and curb getters.
Well, we need to save that one, too.
It sounds like you might need to do a little bit more research on this one, Greg.
You want one more, you want an easement? Or you wanna see if there's an easement anyway?
Yeah, if we determine if it's on private property or not, if it's, if it's in the easement, then maybe we'd need to look a little bit more seriously at, at the moment where.
Is there a fence over there? Between their yard and this?
No.
No?
Actually, their kids can go right, right into the drainage.
Yeah.
So, this obviously goes under the road, right?
There is a small, whoever built the road, put in a small culvert, I guess, it's either a six or eight inch pipe, and with the amount of water that flows in there.
And it discharges, uh, the road?
Yeah, but it's, for the most part, we couldn't even get to the top of it. So, it's, it has to be leaching, basically, probably where that ditch line goes for that pipe.
Oh, yeah. Let's find out the easement, if it's on their property or not.
Okay. No problem, we'll do that.
So, we'll put this on our next agenda?
One other item.
It's not on here.
You know better.
You're supposed to do an amendment.
Um, yeah, then we open the bid, bids for the loader. Uh, the only bid we got was Wyoming machine, should have that in the packet. The bid price was two hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. We'd originally planned to put this into a lease purchase over a five year period. We budgeted two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, so it's just over eight thousand dollars over our budget, budgeted number. The loader, we reviewed specs, visiting specs, they have their surety bond secured. They actually have a machine coming in in December, so we definitely wouldn't have to wait to have one built. Uh, the only, they have to add one item to it, that's not a big deal, is a backup sensor system. Instead, they add, they add that on, get the sensor. The loader this one is replacing has been down for over three years, one or four years, I guess. Um, and the other one is not fixable, it's not even worth talking about. It's scrawled in. Who's pulling drag? If you want to.
What was, what was our budget, did you say?
Two hundred and forty-four thousand. And that budget number came from January, so in that, that amount of time, loader made that much.
And this one's big enough, huh?
What's that?
This one's big enough?
It's, it's gonna be the same size as the one that currently.
And nobody will do wheelies over the trail tracks with it?
Well, I can't say that. Gonna try and not do it.
So, where's the other eight thousand coming from?
Until we can spread this over a five year period, I think we can absorb the eight thousand if they need an extra budget.
I move we accept it, I guess, if that's it.
Can you get a street sweeper attachment for him?
I can't.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
The city's in desperate need of new equipment. Everything that's there was there when I was there, and that was twelve years ago.
Probably already twenty years ago.
Some of it probably was.
Our other current loader is a two thousand and three with about nine thousand hours. Instead of splitting the hours off between two machines over the last three years, we just shed a bunch of hours on this machine.
And that one was the cowl jewel of the fleet?
Yeah.
And that was?
We've on debt.
Getting worn out.
We've on debt, we bought it used from Y-Dot for, what, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, something like that.
They don't have any more?
What's that?
No, I checked it out for, we sent this to bid.
I did find a dump truck.
Don't you have to bid those though?
Not if it's another state entity or another government.
Okay, any other? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you very much, just will be a big help.
I hope I don't see you.
I hope I don't see you. The only other thing I have was, do you want to set a date or do you want me to send out an email for dates that we could have the water sewer committee be to discuss the contracts?
This meeting has gone pretty long anyways, right? Pretty hard to send out an email.
Well, you gotta send one out for sanitation too. Sanitation and water, so.
Um, starting next week, I'll be off for Wednesday through, I don't know when yet. I like that structure next, next week. So, I'm gonna have to stay on Thursday for a while, so you can get up and get these done.
Who's gonna be in charge while you're doing?
Tracy and Justin usually take over on things.
I have a question for you. When, when you go out to Butte Drive and they turn down my street, right, right where he used to live, um, I saw a guy out there with a Kubota and he's picking up the sidewalk and everything and he's setting up the sides. I looked all over around while he was gone for a building permit or something, and there isn't anything there, and I was wondering, do you know anything about this project?
They pulled the curb and the sidewalk from next to the, the shop there on, on Butte.
Yeah, he's out there cutting the curb, he, he, yeah, he moved it in nice big chunks, I'll say that, he didn't bust anything.
It looks like they're gonna pour an apron or an approach.
Or a driveway or something.
I'll have to talk to interim engineer Bartlett about that.
Okay, well, is that, I guess it's okay if he doesn't.
Flatwork, I don't believe.
Bar's private.
You don't need a permit for that?
Flatwork, flatwork.
Um, during my meeting this morning with Park Pacific, uh, they did mention when we were talking about all the different, um, ideas, uh, you know, we were talking about the bike path. I told them we could probably just put something there, but I would talk to you, they say there's nowhere to dispose of their dog's droppings and they have to carry it for like two miles. So, um, is there some things that we can put out there that? Those little containers, didn't we have those at one time?
No, we looked at, we wanted to put them out there, and we're gonna put them next to the statues and the rocks to help protect them from blowing away. And we recommended not to put them next to there, so we had to find a place to put them. The other thing is what kind of container to put. Regular ninety-five gallon can, it's close to any driveway, it will be filled up every single week.
I was just thinking one of the, like, what we have on Main Street.
Ones on Main Street are really nice, and they're really expensive. You're talking, you're talking, I'm not, I'm not positive they're not, they're not a thousand dollars. Cause we looked at getting other benches and other garbage, decorative garbage containers like that for other places, they're expensive.
Okay, but I do agree with that.
I, I understand, we, I agree, we looked into it, we're just trying to figure out where to place them and how much money we wanted to spend on this. So, I like the decorative ones, I think they look better. Uh, they weigh enough that they won't blow away, we could keep them away from the statue and rock and bench.
Well, and they have the lids on them, that it would be hard for people to throw a bunch of stuff on them.
Well, yeah, this one has the covered lids, so you, you have to actually physically pull a can out in order to dump large bags of garbage. So, we can look into a cost.
Can you?
Yep. What about the high school for metal pad?
And build up.
Make a box.
I can check into that.
It would be a good idea. I mean, it just needs to be a little container to put there.
Well, we, we, yes, we write.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
Some design on plan, some of that. Yeah. The high school would help with the project.
That would be a good idea. That'd be cool. Yeah. Class of night, two thousand.
Um, the only other thing I had, I attended a grant writing training last month, the one Donnie, you sent me, uh, that actually turned out to be a very good class. Uh, I've been wanting to do a wastewater and stormwater master plan and pretty much wrote it in the class, so. One thing we're gonna do is look at the thing order SRF and try and get that on the IUD distinction, so we get a cost. Um, there's a grant management class coming up in October, nineteenth and twentieth, uh, same, same company, so I'm gonna attend those.
Okay. You're gonna learn more than you learned in old well, right?
Yeah, somebody's gotta do it.
I did see Mark the other day, and I thanked him for all his help and information. Um, and he would call me anytime, so, great guy.
A lot of the, a lot of the funding questions I was able, that I had was, I was able to answer with writing his coat tails, basically, going to see the director, him and Keenan and the DQ and some of those people's.
Keep riding his coat tails.
Uh, no, I'm on them.
And he's more than willing to help, which is great.
Yeah, he says, when I go down to, to law DR projects, he said he'd go with me and help me out and give me the pointers to get it done, so.
For Heritage Park.
Well, in this grant writing class I went to, they actually had several other sites.
Just seeing if I got a rise out of this stew over here.
Kind of clearing house for grants. Some of them do cost, they cost up to twelve hundred dollars a year. Um, you get one grant to pay for it. So, I might be looking into some of those and we may spend just a little bit of money making sure we got access to, to these grants. But it's, it's everything from foundation grants to just tons of stuff. Uh, you pick and choose what you wanna, wanna do.
All right, we're gonna lose Sergeant Thompson here in a minute.
Yeah, no kidding. So. Gonna lose half this council, too.
Is there anything else for, um, Greg?
New question, one of our constituents is here, asked a question on, is on the water line at Dell Park, long repair, camper spot.
Called in, locates, we looked at it, I'm not so sure I wanna tear it up before the car show. We were ready to do it, we've got locates done, there's nothing there. We were gonna start it this week, but I really don't know if I want a big dirt pile right in the middle of, from the park.
Smaller, best event.
So, if, if it's council's pleasure, we'll wait, if you would rather me dig it up now, we can dig it up.
I think council, I'd be good.
I'd be too.
I'd be too.
Yeah, I'd rather leave it as much intact as we can. We did also have another issue come up over, uh, get sewer main, so many directional drill through our sewer main, it finds motel. So, we kinda had to shift gears and, and working on that, trying to get it going again, so. That was fun to find.
I heard.
Eight o'clock on.
I heard all about it.
Yeah, on Saturday night.
What about the bathroom?
Uh, we haven't heard anything as far as I know, unless, he has heard something back about the.
So, a letter was sent, um, I believe that we sent a copy to Stacy, I believe. Um, I can get you guys, I can get the council, excuse me, an electronic copy if you like. It basically lays out, I went pretty meticulously. It basically lays out, I went pretty meticulously through the contract and lays out everything. We haven't heard anything as of yet. I was assuming that we would probably wait until the next council meeting, if I haven't heard anything, then I would probably ask the council to move to allow me to file some sort of an action to recoup the costs that we're missing on that.
Was there a respond date?
So I believe there was, I mean, at this point, they're a year out on their contract, they're, I mean, in, in terms of the legal world, they're kind of dead to rights on a lot of things. For instance, the liquidated damages part. Furthermore, if they don't respond, the issue is, is, at least as far as I can tell, especially coming from what I've heard from Greg, which is that he can't get a response in a letter form or even an email, I think at this point, it's kind of time to buck up, so.
I think it's ridiculous over in this situation. So I, I feel like we should put a little bit more pressure on it.
Yeah.
Have you heard anything about them finding bankruptcy or anything?
So they're still on the Secretary of State website for Idaho, but even jurisdiction is given to Wyoming, it's under Wyoming law, the contract's under Wyoming law, the purpose of the contract is basically a service as well as a, a product for the city of Newcastle. I, frankly, you guys, as, as far as, as the running of a corporation or a, you know, a company goes, it's really bad business to sign a contract and then do nothing about it when someone asks you to basically deliver the product you're asking for. I don't know if I've ever, I've seen people renag on contracts, but they just do literally nothing, so.
Anything else for Greg? Sergeant Derek Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will start off with the calls for service for each respective agency from twenty-first August until today. Our community service officer filled with twenty-nine calls, we've got the police department, one hundred and fifty-six calls. Weston County S O, ninety-three calls. Upton P D, fifty-seven calls. Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department, eight calls. Weston County Fire Protection District, six calls. Upton Volunteer Fire Department, five calls. And Newcastle Ambulance Service, thirty-seven calls. Upton Ambulance, five calls. The second thing I need to request is a conditional offer of employment for Allison Stevens as a dispatcher, pending the completion of all of the hiring requirements set forth by the post for dispatchers at eighteen dollars and seven cents an hour.
Do we have an idea of how long it'll be?
I would project within the next two weeks.
With probation?
Yes.
For a year?
Made a motion that wins. I move, Donnie seconded.
Oh, we got it done, okay.
Is, is there a fifty cent raise after the year probation?
Yeah, well, it'll be under the joint powers board.
Oh, yeah.
So this would basically be the last part, okay. So, we have a vote and, or a motion and second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Any other issues, I think we already had it covered. We did talk about our community service officer, Rebecca Swoteski, did resign for last day was on the second. We're currently trying to restructure that or make a concrete decision on how we're gonna handle that situation, so.
Anything else?
That's all I had.
Any questions for Sergeant?
I did just, on, at the last meeting, we did give Kelly Moran the fifty cent raise, but in that motion, we did not reflect backdating until her certification date, which was June twenty-eighth?
I believe that was correct, yes.
I move that we backdate the fifty cent raise for her certification back to June twenty-eighth.
I second that.
Make a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Any other questions for Sergeant? Um, standing committee reports, Donnie, did you need to say anything that we haven't heard?
I think we've covered most of, still revisit some things in the I U E N, the next meeting, bring up the next council meeting, if we've come up with any decisions.
Any other business?
I actually have any other business? I've been getting more and more pressure from my constituents about whether we continue to operate a police department in our town or if we move to county policing. I think, given the amount of pressure that I've received, that it would be in order for us to have some kind of a public hearing on the matter, so that we can discuss it and see what our constituents feel about it. Some of the concerns are that we operate a police department at one point five million dollar budget and that they think that that money might be better spent if we go to county policing and we don't have such a, a large line item for our budget. I've been approached about this early on in my time on the council, but, you know, I, I kinda did some research and I talked to people in South Dakota and some of the other communities in Wyoming that do this. You know, some of the finance officers and everything, you know, in South Dakota, thought that, that that's like a no brainer, you know, that, that we would save so much money, you know. But being that my dad was the chief of police here, I've always had a real soft spot for the Newcastle Police Department and I wanna see them succeed, but I, I think that my constituents are talking a lot right now and that they would be better served if we had some kind of a hidden and we talked to the public about this and, and try to find out where they're at.
Does the council wanna have a, a town hall?
Is this a good time, Mr.? This came up in, in, I think, two thousand and eighteen or somewhere back in there, Bob Bonner kinda started this one. And we had a lot of people come in and people against it. Yeah, they sure did, they jumped right on it, they didn't wanna do anything with our police department. And I, not that we shouldn't look at the idea, I'm just saying this might not be the time. We've got a lot of things that we just didn't.
So the argument, Councilman Boss, is that being that we have a diminished workforce right now with the P D, that now would be the most appropriate time to start looking into this. I've spoke with the sheriff a little bit about this, to see if he was even interested in doing this. And he told me that he is, if that's what the constituents want. Um, I, I've spoken to some of the county commissioners about this and they're on board with whatever the sheriff wants. So, I mean, it's really up to the public to maybe weigh in on this a little bit. And if they decide that they're comfortable with our one point five million dollar budget and they wanna maintain a police department in our town, then it's a moot point.
So when that whole thing with Bob Bonner happened, I was sitting over there and the sheriff at that time said he did not want anything to do with it, so what changed his mind, did you ask?
No, I wasn't aware that there, that was even a thing in twenty eighteen, I think I was still working for the shop and drinking lots of cold beer and just not really concerned about it. Now that I'm sitting in this seat and it's been brought to my attention, and it was shortly after I was sworn on to the council, I was approached by a lot of people that said, man, you really need to get rid of that police department, and then, you know, at that time, I made some telephone calls, I did some due diligence and, you know, and then I talked to a lot of people and they weren't at that time for him, they, they weren't comfortable with it. But this has been a roller coaster ride since I've been on the council, so, and it's been brought up again by multiple people. So I just think that it would be in order to have a town hall and have the citizens weigh in on it. Like I said, if the citizens wanna keep going with the police department, then by all means, I, I like our police department, I wanna see them succeed, but I also wanna reflect what my constituents want and it's been brought to my attention by multiple people.
I'm with Councilman Boss, we should postpone this for a month or two till we see what's going on. And I don't see where that's gonna save that much money because we'll have to have the same force, we just won't need a chief, cause the sheriff will take it over. But we need the same personnel, we need the same vehicles, the cost of the dispatchers, the cost of the Motorola.
And we have the joint powers board, that's...
Well, we, we definitely need to know what we would spend if we did either thing. And would, would the sheriff absorb our families, these, these people are our neighbors, they live here. And, you know, I'd like to see that if we did anything like that, that our families are taken care of, that have served our coun, our, our country, our, our city.
Our community, yeah. I mean, I'm, I don't wanna see anything happen to our employees either, I, I wanna see that they're supported. But this seems to be something that needs to be evaluated to some extent.
I know last year, you know, I asked the, the question of where does the money go from the citations that are issued? And I approached you the other day about it. And so, I think Becky told me that there was twenty, was it twenty-three thousand six hundred dollars in citations in the last fiscal year?
Yes.
That doesn't even pay for one officer's wages. And our previous chief, I approached him and all but begged him to put somebody on Main Street because, and I know you guys heard this from me, but time and time again, but there are people literally doing eighty miles an hour down Main Street and that is ridiculous. I mean, it's ridiculous.
It's dangerous.
And he didn't, he didn't do a thing about it, he said, are you sure you wanna do that to your constituents? Well, the way I look at it, if you're gonna drive eighty mile an hour down the street, you're asking for it, but you're not because nothing's being done. So we get a new chief and I asked him, I did the same thing, and nothing.
No, officer, there's an officer sitting at the True Value.
Uh, that's, you don't, you don't see what I see. You, you do not see what I see. I watched that officer sit at True Value and seen things go on that he didn't see because he's looking at his phone. I'm serious, I mean, I, I look at this stuff like crazy. Look, you should see this, this is ridiculous too, but.
What is that?
Nothing was done.
What, what's that?
Nothing was being done about the speeders and the traffic violations, we got people parking the wrong direction on streets everywhere. We got speeding, we got running stop signs, and nothing's being done. So Becky said that, I think it was the previous year, the one officer wrote like six hundred citations. Just, just her. And I'm sure they were all in the bypass, but, and I mean, it's the same thing on bypass. There's, you can see people every day driving seventy and eighty miles an hour down the bypass.
I know, I beep at them on the line.
And.
I do this.
And my, my problem is, is I see a lot during the day because, yep, I'm self-employed and I get around. But all I see is cop cars at the P D or at the, at the, the...
Donut shop.
No, we don't have a donut shop. Over here at the county building, the annex. And I've seen cars, cop cars, sit there for hours. I don't know what they're doing, they must be doing some sort of business, but their car's sitting there running and ain't nothing going on other than what they're doing in there, well, nobody else is out patrolling because twenty-three thousand dollars in tickets? That's nothing compared to what's going on, I mean, we could be busting people like crazy. Now, if, if that's not what we're interested in, if we don't wanna make that money back to pay wages and pay the one point, the one and a half million dollar budget that we have and you're just, you just have the department there to be there if something happens, if something major goes down and they're gonna respond to that, fine, if that's what you want. But we got all these, all these violations going on that nothing's being done about. And that's, that's the way I see it, and, and I'm, I'm here to tell you, it ain't no different with the county. There's any given time you can see a county truck, a county truck sitting at the port, sitting anywhere, but they're not patrolling the county and our city police aren't patrolling the city streets either. Otherwise, we'd be getting tickets, cause it's, it's rampant.
Sergeant Thompson, do we even, do we have a detective right now?
No.
No detective?
No detective.
This, this here is, I think this first one is one of our maintenance trucks, sitting behind the old dentist office, what was the name?
Erickson.
Erickson's dental office. This truck sat here from Friday through Monday. It's behind the building, hid. And then this one, the other night, like I said, I get around. This one's at seven thirty at night at the Jehovah's Witness Church. I went by there and I looked in there and I seen that truck and it, it looked like a city truck. I turned around, went back, sure enough, it was there for two hours. They're not working there. That's a personal, that's personal use right there. And I guess what I'm basing this on is, we, every meeting, we talk about money, we don't have money. Then how come all this is going on? That's costing the city, the taxpayers, gasoline, mileage, maintenance.
Wear and tear.
Wear and tear.
Sergeant Thompson?
And if that truck can be there from Friday to Monday, evidently, we don't need it.
They're on call, they're allowed to take pickups all month when they're on call. As far as what it's doing here and here, I am in the middle of re, redoing the vehicle use. Off when they're on call, we may end up just ending. By recommendation, the L G L A, I've been working with them, talking with them about this kind of stuff and what to do about it, so I am trying to address it.
And I know you can't be everywhere, you can't be. And I don't expect you to be, but man, it's just, it's rampant.
Cause the problem is if, if one of the church party backs up and hits a car when you're actually partially liable for the cost. That's where this all came about. That's where this all came about. I need to figure out how to do this properly, like I said, I'm working with the LGLA. They sent me a bunch of information, I'm trying to compile a. A vehicle use uh policy.
But it, how much time? It would be wasted if they went to the shop to get a vehicle and then to the location?
And that varies, depending on where the, where where it is and where it is. Sue or the other night, um we still have to go to the truck, or go to the shop, get the back truck, even the lot. And that's kind of where I'm at, so I'm kind of dancing back and forth between how to, how to do this, if they take one home. Problem is if they, if they take one home and they're at church. Then they gotta go to their house, get the pickup to go to the shop. So would it be better just to quit taking pickups home, or? Or what to do?
Well, Greg, when I was on call at City Shop, I mean. We weren't supposed to go and buy a bunch of stuff around town, we just went home. And then the truck was there. And then normally, I mean, I didn't, I'm not a church-going man all the time, so. Uh, I was at home, and then I would get a call, I would jump in the pickup, and then it was quick response time. And then most of the city trucks that you take home on call. Um, you know, like the one Justin drives has all the tools you could possibly need. To respond to most of the things that go on in town. So you could go and, you know, shut off the water, turn on the water, you you know, you could. Do what you needed to do. But we didn't drive. I, we didn't drive around, we weren't allowed to drive around town in the pickup, we we drove home. And then we responded from home. And I think there were times when I was doing something in the evening. And I had to run home, or I left it at home and I just ran straight to the shop, depending on where I was in town.
And the other side of this is. Even, I've even done this myself, my wife calls me up, says she needs to need something from the grocery store, gets on my way home. So I saw, get what she needs at the grocery store, and then take off. Otherwise, I go back, I go to my house, drop off my city pick-up, get my G, right back into town and get a gallon of milk, and then drive back, seems redundant. How do we do that? Because there are employees that live farther out. If they're driving right past the grocery store or whatever. I mean, that's, that's another issue I've got to contend with here. It's in their normal path of travel, it's not like they're going out of their way across town to a church. No, I was not aware that they were taking. This one, I think. One, I think uh. His girlfriend owns that building.
Yep.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, he does.
Did they move into it?
No. But the truck looks like it's hid back there. And. I could go, I could go on and on, but I pull up to Maverick one day. And there's a city employee standing out front, just BSing, it's eleven fifteen in the morning. It's not lunchtime, it's past break time. And I get out of my vehicle, I walk out, and he says, oh, you caught me, huh? I didn't say a word, I did not say one word to him about it, I talked, he was talking to somebody else, I talked to that guy. And I left and he was still there. And I'm going, you talk about being shorthanded all the time? This guy's standing there for thirty minutes, and he could have been there longer, I don't know how how long he was there before I got there. And it's not my, it's not my duty to say anything to him, you're his boss, I'm not. But he knew he was caught. Doing nothing, and the truck's sitting there running in the parking lot. I think we could cut back on expenses.
Another thing that was more in line with the police department was uh. I don't remember which council meeting it was, but we were discussing the use of the patrol car. For our employee that lives in Sundance. Um. You know, if I recall correctly, everybody was kind of shaky. About that officer taking that patrol car all the way to Sundance. And then someone was supposed to look into. Um, what our insurance said about that car being taken to Sundance. And then, of course, everybody in Newcastle has a scanner.
They know, they know what's going on.
And he's calling himself out of service when he was out at Four Corners. So he drove twenty miles up to Four Corners before he called himself out of service. And then he did an ice thing and called in. Uh, you know, a vehicle that was broken down, or it was something of that nature.
Yes, that begs the question, how did they know where he was at when he called out of service?
Um, cause they heard him call himself out of service, I don't know, that's the way I.
And there was a mile marker?
Well, he doesn't call himself out and say, I'm at this mile marker, that's not.
Well, he goes ten forty-one, he goes ten forty-two in Sundance.
So anyway, I've also passed that car on Highway five eighty-five between. Um, Newcastle and Sundance a couple of times myself. And you know, I, I see a law enforcement vehicle, so of course, I I immediately look at my speedometer. And then, oh, I'm not speeding, and I look up, wait a minute, that's a, that's a Newcastle vehicle. And I don't know that we ever cleared him, because there was talk about him leasing the car. And all kinds of, you know, but it all ended as talk, and now we're like a month and a half down the road. And he's driving back and forth to Sundance. So I've worked, personally, I've worked jobs where I had to commute forty-five minutes to get to work. Or, you know, even an hour to get to work. And uh, one gas didn't cost as much.
Well, I guess to cut to the chase, I was going to authorize it, I didn't, I didn't prove it, and if it's something that needs to go away, we'll make it go away.
Well, I don't know, how does the rest of the council feel about it, I mean, I.
You guys will have to decide, that was a little before the.
I think it needs to go away.
Ran the, ran the.
That, that's just almost preposterous to me, it is. You know, we we've all had jobs we had to drive to, and nobody gave us a truck or a car to go do it, you know.
And I know we're hurting for employees right now too, but like.
Truck to go.
There used to be a five mile limit around town where a a city employee was allowed to live. You know, my dad was right on. Like he was six miles out of town, but they let him be the chief for eight years, you know? But we used to have a limit, as, you know, you had to live within five miles of town, is my understanding. Anyway. We're, we're trying to set records tonight, this one was just a long meeting.
Oh, yeah, how long's the longest meeting we ever had?
I don't know, we're getting there, okay, we still have a lot to do. Okay, um. So are we gonna revisit having a town hall meeting? Is that the consensus?
Let's revisit it.
Alright, so then I need a motion to leave regular um city council session and enter into executive session. Reference Personnel sixteen dash four dash four zero five A double I.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second, any further discussion?
Thank you guys for coming.
Okay.
And thank you for your comments.
Moving into executive session at ten seventeen.
I'll bring her away.
Yeah, yeah, bring her.
Thank you. Um, I don't. Regular session at ten forty-six. Can I get a motion um to let city crew supervisor Greg Stumpf move forward with um. Uh, returning or receiving the funds back from, do I need to say his name? From uh employee that's leaving before their year. Um, from receiving their CBL as signed in um agreement contract.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Um, do we have a motion to change um the reimbursement if. Leaving before a year before certification of a CBL from one year to three year?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Um, while uh the chief is on medical leave, um I would like to have a motion made. Um, to raise or give uh Sergeant Derek Thompson a three dollar raise. For adding administrative duties uh while the chief is gone. Do we need to date back that? Or can we just do it from this day forward?
This day forward.
This day forward, okay.
I'm hoping that we give it three dollars an hour for administrators duties.
Starting?
Um, today.
September fifth, okay.
Second.
Okay, we have our motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Anything else before we go to claims against the city?
Madam Mayor, I have one more thing, um I'd like to ask the council for leave to amend the employee training reimbursement agreement for some of that language. So that there isn't some sort of loophole in there that they can use.
I say, go for it. We need a motion.
I don't think.
Go for it.
That's administrative, isn't it?
Yeah.
I move that we allow our.
I do too, I second it.
Smack them dead if they try to screw us. That's my motion.
I wonder if they're gonna put that in. Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, you have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
So I have one more thing too before we.
Oh my god.
Yeah, so, well, I mean, we gotta make some kind of record here.
Oh, we've done that, thank you.
I'll just talk for at least. Um, so. We decided to to move the town hall idea about county policing. Off until when? Till the next evening?
Down the road, down the road. I think we need to let the Joint Powers Board get together and. And then visit.
A few months down the road to kind of review this and.
Maybe get as much information as possible to go there as well, because to do a presentation.
Two, three months before they finally get some of their meetings down and start incorporating.
Do we want to wait that long? Cause we're gonna be moving a police department, right? Oh, which reminds me.
I think that this needs to be visited.
No.
Sooner rather than later.
I think we do.
And I think that. It'll be up to the feedback we get from the community as to whether we move forward with it or not. I think that if they come in and it's overwhelming and. Word on the street is that they want to maintain a police department here in town, then it's moot point, we just drop the matter. But if it's overwhelming that they don't want to pay one point five million dollars of a budget. To get twenty-six thousand dollars back in revenue from citations.
Would that be something that needs to go on the town, or just uh an agreement?
So the dissolution, at least from what I recall back in uh. When Sundance got rid of its city police department, it was just an agreement, but. I'd have to look through just to be completely sure that it's not by some sort of statutory procedure. Cause they did change a ton this last cycle.
The way that I hear it is that if you make this decision. And you remove your police department and go to county policing. That it's really hard to go back if you want to reinstitute the police department.
Yeah, you have to.
Yeah, you couldn't afford it.
It's too expensive.
You have to actually get, you have to petition the Supreme Court to have a municipal court. So, um, and I mean, they, they'll do it if everyone's on board. So, um, the other thing is, is you have to have a judge that becomes, well, it's the municipal magistrate basically. And then, of course, you have to have, um, you know, a clerk and everything else that goes with that. And then filing the system back, cause once you get rid of it.
Yeah. Well, I I for one would like to see the the numbers, and I haven't crunched any numbers on what this is, if it's. Probably, I think, but we keep what we got. And and I'm very concerned about our personnel.
Yeah, and I know when we looked at this before, I just don't want it to get to five people that want chickens to be the deciding vote.
Yeah.
It's a majority. And we advertise this and actually do this the correct way, because I know we've talked to Custer, and Custer said that they would come over and talk to us. About this is not a good idea. So I want to be able to get some ducks in a row to do this correctly, not as a hurry up, push out, hey, let's get rid of it.
And I think if if it was to go the route where it was all county, we need to have a. A really good contract, because. I don't know how they are now, I've been gone for a long time, but when I worked in there. All they did was civil process and delivered papers.
That's what they do.
They didn't do a lot of anything else, now I know they have some cases here and there. Um, you know, drug cases and domestics and things like that, but most of the time, it was just civil process.
And see, uh, well, I was gonna ask you this question, can we, and you say contract, and we present, if we go to the, the. To the county with this county policing, we we want police here, I mean, we want these ordinances, you know, enforced. We want people to get stopped on our roads.
That would have to be a contract because. Yeah.
It'd have to be an ordinance officer. They have to do our ordinance.
Yeah.
Well, I would make the county hire an ordinance officer.
Yeah, and contracting to do it.
It'd take more than one officer, oh, because.
Absolutely, and and that's what we need to talk about.
Twenty-four seven, you gotta have probably three of them at least.
If they're not interested in enforcing ordinances. I mean, it would still be a huge savings on the budget, even if we employed two CSOs to go around and write tickets. For grabs and stuff like that. And then I thought the chicken reference just now was a poor reference.
No, it is.
You uh, I mean. I don't, I'm not in favor of going in half cocked here either. Like, there needs to be.
Is that a chicken reference?
There need, huh?
Is that a chicken reference?
Well, that's okay. Touche. So uh, so there has to be, like, there has to be a lot of research done on this.
Absolutely.
And I had heard that Custer likes having just the sheriff's department. But I don't, I haven't talked to a lot of people over there, that was just what I've been told, they were happy. To like reduce their budget and not have to pay as much. And then, you know, uh, the lady I know in Dell Rapids, on the other side of South Dakota, she said. That she, they were, they would never go back because they were saving so much money. And their citizens were still getting their needs met. So I mean, but then I've heard Sundance has some misgivings about it. Um, but I haven't talked to anybody there, so there needs to be a lot of talking. And communities in Wyoming specifically, cause like, you know, we may be ten miles from the border, but we're still Wyoming. So maybe look at communities within our own boundaries for this.
If we do a town hall, we might want to relocate. Cause it was packed in here when I was sitting in there. Out of curiosity, if we, if we dissolved the municipal, municipal jurisdiction more or less. How would we have a CSO officer that could issue citations if we don't really have a municipal court or judge or any of that?
From what I've heard, and I don't know this off the top of my head, and I. I am going to go and ask Hugh Senior about this, because he basically oversaw the transfer, uh, I shouldn't say the transfer. The dissolution of the Sundance Police Department. Um, and that was more because of the manner in which the Sundance Police Department kind of acted, but. Regardless, there's more money and everything else, there's economic savings to it, right? Um. I think you can have in the three, a few CSO officers, but you obviously would have to have a budget and then keep your court. The issue with that is, is then you still have to pay your judge, basically, to come in as a city magistrate.